Questions? Statements?
I'm kind of cold here, but...
That's why it's special.
But I'll move to approve the application for an extension of premises tagged from Smith by the copper queen hotel for Invicta L that 11 Howell Avenue in Arizona on Friday, June 14th, 2019, and Saturday, June 15th, 2019.
I'll second.
Thank you, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Pro same side. Motion carried unanimously, that's a five zero. Item number two, discussion of possible acceptance of the resignation of Councilmember Gabe Lindstrom, and discussion recommendations for scheduling to fill this vacancy. The discussion to fill is that the chart indicates that after acceptance of this, someone has to be appointed within 31 days and not less than 15 days. And so, tentatively, July 2nd meeting?
Okay.
Tentatively, July 2nd, and I was going to talk to Mr. Pocken and Ms. Coronado to see if we can do that realistically on that night or if we're gonna have to call a special because it's going to involve council interviewing and talking to the applicants that are interested. And so, with that, I open it up for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, just a question, does anybody calculated from today what 15 or 31 days are?
I did.
Just so we know where our range is.
I did, I just have to pull the email, just a second.
It was the 11th, I believe, of July.
So, does it start from then, on the acceptance, or on Mr. Pocken?
The acceptance.
It was sent on June 4th.
It was the, it's the acceptance.
It would be today as the acceptance.
Our clock starts today, assuming you accept it today.
And so, the 15 days would be the 25th?
July 20th, or excuse me, June 25th.
June 25th.
And then July, around 25th.
Yes, I believe so, sir.
Okay. Alright, so, 'cause we've got some time in there to play with.
Right. And I would suggest that, should this be accepted, that we advertise immediately. And we would have time to get it into the observer by noon tomorrow for...
Flexible, we're flexible. I was already going to beg for forgiveness, so...
So, do we have discussion?
So, July 2nd, is that...
No, somebody needs to move.
Well, I'm moved, do we accept the resignation of Councilmember Gabe Lindstrom? I also move to adjutant council meeting for July 2nd to appoint replacement, also move to this position.
I accept it.
Ms. Coronado?
Councilmember Giacominio?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Protenkline?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Acceptance is passed three to two. Item number three, discussion of possible recommendations regarding the draft budget for the 2019-2020 fiscal year, Mr. Pocken and Ms. Bagley. But we have some call to the public which isn't on the agenda, but will certainly allow it, I will allow it. So, Mr. Budge...
You're on, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Just quickly, I'm coming for you tonight to talk about a couple of items, of course, it is the budget. A very nice summary by the finance director showing the changes, and of course, the deficit has decreased mainly because of the increase in ambulance revenue, $150,000. It's always a moving target, but I want to stress going forward that not only consider cuts, but also consider the money coming in and not put too much pressure on the cuts. As we all know, at least when I was here, we always allowed 250, even aside $300,000 in overspending because there is things in there like grants and $100,000 in contingency that never gets spent, so that seems reasonable. But above that, you would really be doing something that I was taught by, I think, one of the best finance directors in the history, and he always told me you cannot spend more than what really is coming in, or else you're that far behind again the next year. I think that's what you're facing this year, so I want to just reiterate that. As far as cuts, I looked and looked and said, "Where can we cut, where can we cut?" And to be quite honest, what I've come to the realization is, if you go and cut the ambulance shelter, you cut the pool, you cut the library, I mean, all the claws come out and everybody go, "Oh, my goodness," because we all have our favorites. The only way we can do is, you need to pick a number, whatever that number may be, 250,000, whatever, and say, "Isn't across the board," and send it back to department heads, because they're the ones spending the money. They know where they could maybe make that two or three percent cut and get you back down to that initial level. So, that would be my recommendation, is across the board, whatever that fancy number may be, percentage-wise, and send it back to department heads and let them make the decision. Lastly, I just ran into this and I thought, "I have a couple more minutes." I started looking at what we charge for business licenses, and I was going down this, and all of a sudden, under city code, 8.2.15, this would solve all of your financial problems. It says licensed inpatient hospitals, providers of inpatient and outpatient hospital services. Your business license is $450,000 a year, that's still on the books. Anyway, I thought, "Wow, that would just solve all." But maybe I'd be all of a sudden... I have to bring that as the lighter end of the line.
Thank you, and I consider appointing a citizens committee headed by you to bring that to the hospitals.
Whatever works. 450 grand.
Mr. Miller?
Thanks. Some of my remarks, Mr. Pocken explained to me that there was an extra $13,000 that was added into this third draft of the budget. It still leaves like 33 grand for advertising for tourism, and that's about 16 grand less than it was last year after the 1% bet taxes now sunsetted. So, but in past budgets, the Queen Mine Fund, the tour, has contributed $16,000 to the visitor center for TPT budget. The bet tax revenue does not completely cover the entire cost of the tourism provision budget. This year, there's an increase in salary for a tourism director that's badly needed. It's a mid-range salary figure that was used by the treasurer. And there was money from the bet tax fund balance that's used to balance the visitor center TPT budget. However, it's meant that the advertising has been cut from about, of about 16 grand. It's a serious drop, and it'll hurt marketing efforts, particularly for the Arizona office of tourism rural grant, which is coming up here in a couple of weeks, and we really need that, we need to work on that. The mine tour has positively benefited from the increase in advertising done the past few years. Mine tour visitation has increased substantially, roughly 7,000 people a year for the past three years. Before that, they were getting about 39,000 people a year, they're now getting 46,000 people a year roughly in the past three years. And even say if it's a reduced figure of 10 bucks a person, I think your charge is actually 13, but say $10 a person, it's at least about 70 grand a year for the past three years, so $210,000. That's a result, and I think it's a direct result of the marketing that the city has been doing. And I think the mine tour fund has been supportive in past years, and I think it should do so again. It's pretty clear from anecdotal information, as well as my own, and I own copper city in, that's filtered in in my own statistics the past few months, that this visitation is beginning to show declines since the office has been vacant, the tourism director office has been vacant for the past six months. There's been some 2,000 emails that were not answered, there's no social media posts, there's no statistical gathering, there's been no travel writers hosted, no advertising opportunities capitalized on. And so, for that reason, we need to get it filled, and I understand you're working on it. And I urge you to please add 16 grand to the tourism budget from the mine tour and nothing from the general fund to keep the tourism salary intact. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Before we... Before we jump all the way in, Ms. Bagley, it's my understanding that, as I recall, last year, we balanced the budget by roughly $350,000 of reserves.
Correct.
And as of, if it's projected, if things continue throughout the rest of this month, that we will not be using any of that?
Right, right now, we have enough revenues to cover our expenses, and we're, I think we're in the black somewhere between 10 and 50,000.
Right. I brought that up because for the audience and for the TV audience to understand that none of that was used, the budget, the department heads and our staff has done a great job of toeing the mark, as they say, in this budget year, so thank you for that. And while I'm at it, I want to thank our staff for us being here. This is, I think we're gonna find the, right away, the acoustics are much better, as long as your microphone's on. And cooler and brighter and so forth, so thank you, Ms. Coronado, and Ms. Bagley, and all the other people that did this stuff.
It's prettier.
And it's prettier.
Well, they put a lot of work into it.
So, Ms. Bagley and Pocken.
I was going to use the word dungeon, that's what the other room reminds me of, complete with bars.
Well, that was a, there was a psychological thing going on with bars.
I was very happy to know that. So, anyway, just a couple of opening remarks, the income with magic tonight. The last council meeting, we talked about getting prepared to do this this evening, and how we would welcome suggestions from all of you, and I know some of you have had conversations with Kerry to that effect. In my experience here in Bisbee, there was one time in eight years where we actually used fund balance. And the other seven years, we ended up with a bit of surplus, and so we were to add to that each year. It's not manna from heaven, although we don't spend it all, it's just a little bit safer place to be. And if you think about the totality of what you spend in a year across all funds, $2 million is not enough. It's kind of where you started the year after you take away the insurance money, kind of started at about $2 million. So, you've got to save the rest. The areas that concern me most as a budget manager are not the expenditures that we put in the budget for one time. The ones that give me concern as a budget manager are the ones that we add to the budget that are going to continue year after year after year after year. So, there's many ways to deal with this thing. I think, you know, we're, let's just call it $600,000, underground numbers is where we're at right now. I don't know from reviewing it over the last day or so myself, that we're gonna get back to 300. But quite frankly, we were in the 350s or so with the first draft of the budget, we added to it. I don't know that it's a practical matter to just remove everything we added or not, okay? But, you know, the bottom line is, I spent a few minutes this afternoon going through five years of audits, those are the five years since I left, so I haven't really looked at them until now. Your revenues have not improved a little bit. Okay? They may be up a little bit one year, then they're down, and then up again, and then down again. That's the nature of the beast. I guess the reason I'm telling you that is because we know expenditures increase, and sometimes we don't have a choice on that, because external forces increase our costs. But we have to, we have to go into this process with the realization that you don't really, you're not really generating more income for anything, okay? The big difference between five years ago and today is your one cent sales tax, and of course, that's dedicated money, very helpful dedicated money in my life, because the streets look a lot like it. But that doesn't operate the city from here yet. So, I think realistically, and I think, you know, a combination of some of the suggestions that you have brought to Kerry, and maybe a little bit of what Mr. Budge may have suggested a moment ago about some across-the-board stuff, I mean, I can nickel-and-dine this thing to death, and I don't think I can get 300,000.
No, because I only got 136,000.
Yeah, so we're gonna start, Joan, with yours.
That's an excellent beginning.
Really is. And anything else that the rest of you have brought to bear, I mean, I'm gonna, you know, we put in some money for at least one additional employee, we have to truly consider whether or not we can really do that, okay? My personal view is, is that we can, okay? So, if we add another cop, that cop is forever, okay? The only good news that comes of that is that Albert is always your recruit. And so, not necessarily do we have all those positions filled, so if you add an additional position tonight, that adds a cost, that cost doesn't go away. Whether we use it or not, we don't know. And the point is, whether or not you want to take that chance. So, you know, that's where I kind of want to start off tonight, because, you know, and probably every year I've ever been a city manager, we've tussled with more cops, whether I worked here, or Winslow, or in Colorado, or anyplace else I've worked. The reality is, you get as much service for the amount of resources you have, and that's that. So, that's where I kind of want to show it off tonight, and I'm gonna make the first suggestion, and suggest we take the cost of having an officer out of it.
So, we're gonna be throwing stuff out like that, rather than going through...
I think you'll be here all night if you want to go through line by line or page by page. I know that Joan has some specifics that she's...
And cares about them, so...
Bill, I think you may have made some suggestions too, somewhere along the way last week.
I did some listening.
Yeah, don't...
More than suggestions.
Yeah, but, you know, I mean, you're the boss, okay? You decide how you're gonna do this, but there's some obvious ones right off the bat that you can...
Well, I would, I would like to start with revenues real quick, just to, so that I totally understand, under the ambulance fees as mentioned by Mr. Budge, presently, the budget reflects a number that if we stay in tune with the year-to-date, we're only gonna hit 74% of that number. My question is, the new number in here, the $1,050,000, is based on a rate increase, but the council hasn't passed that rate increase. And I need to know, I would like to know, what is that rate increase, and is that the max, or who came up with it, and what is, that's what I want to know. So, I don't know if that's, if that's cheaper steel, or...
The most likely.
Yeah, we are planning for a rate increase. Lieutenant Ronald V. Senor is doing, has more of the information on it, but he just got called in, he just had to do an old call because of a massive call down in that car. But we are talking, getting into a phone conference with the state tomorrow for the increase, he's gonna wrap us through it. She said that actually, we found the last increase was in 14.
Yes, sir.
So, we are due for an increase, she says we are due for one. It just depends on, like, the population, number of calls, and everything, but that will be worked out tomorrow, exactly how much we will be getting in this increase. And then after that, we can increase again in six months, add the letter increase in six months. Certainly, right now, they have us at 947.87 for an ALS and BLS rate, and $16.73 per mileage. And Douglas, what you're trying to get right where Douglas' fire is, they are now at $1,341.46, but their mileage increase is over $1,000, theirs is $11.33 a mile. But the state says we might, pretty much, they might be able to match us with Douglas' fire.
Yeah, and I'm not trying to set you up, you and I talked about this, I'm trying to make sure that everybody kind of understands this also. But do we know, if we try to go with what Douglas has, is theirs stale also?
Is it?
Is it stale also? I mean, you see, is Douglas a recent increase, or is theirs a couple of years old, so that if we go to theirs...
No, Douglas just increased last year.
Okay.
Because I just got the letter from the state. Anytime an agency puts in for the rate increase, they notify all the departments about that.
Okay, great.
So, they just put in for it, and like you said, Lieutenant V. Senor's been working with the state and give the numbers, and they're actually doing a phone conference tomorrow, step by step, to get it going.
Okay, well, this, this number that's here is based on something, and I know I talked to Ms. Bagley, it's based on the number of calls per year and a projected increase. Is that the Douglas rate that we projected?
I thought it was 250 maybe, but that was like 60% of what the increase was, what we thought we would collect, times the number of calls.
Yes, so we're actually thinking ahead and looking at collection versus billing.
Correct.
That's, that's great. Okay, so, the bottom line is, kind of, we'll have a much better handle on it after tomorrow.
Correct.
As far as the exact...
So, we'll find out more information, and I could probably have some number stories I don't want.
Thanks, Chief, I appreciate it.
Could I ask a question?
Yes, you can.
Could you just repeat what the amount is that we're requesting now, was 900?
Well, right now, our rates, 947.87, and $16.73 a mile. If this also has, where it says separate charges for disposable medical supplies and adage, as yes, but I don't think the bill may charge supplies, that we're actually charging supplies for us.
Right, I think, I think you're right, I think we are not, but I do believe by state we're allowed to.
Correct.
And I might suggest that that's just something to look at, you can get, depending on the, the level of care, it can be quite expensive.
Yes. And you want Douglas's rates as well?
No, I got those, thank you.
Anybody else for Chief Castillo? Thanks, Chief. Thanks for letting me put you on the spot.
I'm on the spot.
Then my, my next thing is, and the last on revenues, is we have fire inspection fees where we have $26,000 in revenue. And I don't know where that is, the council passed a ability to hire a part-time inspector to do nothing but fire inspections, and when Mr. DeShawn left, that left with him. And so, I don't know where, where we're getting this 26 grand, because we haven't got it for any of the years before. And I always worry about a budget, using reserves is one thing, but using made-up figures is, and I don't mean it that way, but estimating figures without a background is something that people worry about.
Obviously, I wasn't a party to the initiation of this program. I will, it's obviously a council mandate, so there should be something being done about it, and so I will talk with Chief Castillo and a very partner about implementing that.
Yeah, and I could tell you, Mr. Pocken, that there subsequent has been discussions with having that fire building, it's a fire inspector, not firefighter, actually attached to the building departments, rather than the fire department, and doing fire inspections in conjunction with the building inspections. And so, I've just given you that, that history, and I didn't see that position in here anywhere.
Well, I'm no stranger to phantom revenues, and when I first arrived here in 2006, we had $450,000 in revenue for auctions.
You sure that wasn't the hospital?
We were gonna give it to the hospital.
Oh, okay.
No, we weren't. Yeah, they shouldn't say stuff that's, end up in a bakery. So, but, you know, to the degree that it was a program that was initiated by the city, we should implement it in whatever form that it was supposed to be implemented, and we'll deal with that.
This way.
Just a comment on that, yeah, the position was passed by council, we've never hired anybody, and it's really not a position that we need at this time, because we have, what do we have, Chief, seven or nine fire inspectors on the department already?
So, we're out here seven or nine.
But they're not outdoing annual building inspections.
Well, they do go out and do, they do go out and do inspections, and if they get called out for whatever reason, they can come back and do it, it's not, you know...
Well, problem appears to be that there's no revenue being generated from this, so that's the part I want to be talking about.
Right, and we discussed, I've been discussing with you, I've got the proposed sheet that we did in 2017 to raise our rates, I put it in one place, city code, and I do have that, so I was gonna give you maybe, maybe tomorrow, if you're ready.
Sure. But just for the purpose of this discussion tonight, okay, there's $26,000 in revenue, we're working on generating those revenues.
Thank you, sir. That's all I have on that, so you want to go to the cops?
Sure. You know, the personnel costs obviously will be impacted... You know, the personnel costs obviously will be impacted to much larger than the base salary, because that will also impact overtime, EREs, based on how many positions you authorize and budget this year. I have just a couple of minutes today to go over this with Chief DeChambe. I think, I think we both see the financial aspect of this and what it means to the general fund, because it is a general fund position. So that is an area where we can have a fairly large impact right away. And I'm trying to, trying to recall what the budget impact was, was it eighty-one thousand? Eighty-one thousand dollars is roughly the base pay in EREs for the office. So that's, that's one thing. There may be other things in here on the, on the, on the rest of the budget, we maybe will also discuss, but that's my suggestion.
Okay, and I, I fully understand that, and I'm still advocating the fact that we keep that position, but that's my, my personal vote, as they say, is that we keep that position and the police department has been, this, this position won't help us on the overtime initially, but it will down the road. And it's, it's a catch-up thing, but if we continue to kick that can down the road, we're never gonna be able to cut the overtime as much as you can in public safety, because you never know. But unless we address it and bite the bullet and, and put this position in, then we'll never be able to, to catch up, but that's, that's my position.
And quite frankly, this is part of the reason why my opening remarks, you know, we just have X dollars, and we're not generating more dollars. Over a five-year period, I don't see the generation of more dollars. So, you know, and this is one of those things that we add to the budget, it never goes away. And overtime is a moving target. I've been doing this for thirty-five years, and I've never, I've, I've heard many years in a row that if we hire more people, the lower overtime, and then when we get done with the next year, overtime is the same. So it's, it's, it's not something that we can do scientifically.
Right, I, I don't want this to sound like an argument between you and I.
No.
Because it's not an argument. But when I, I look at us getting down again to six officers working twelve-hour shifts, I mean, that is guaranteed horrendous overtime. And that one extra person will really, and that seventh person will really make a big difference in that overtime. And so that's, that's what I look at, is, is with the attrition that we have in, in the police department, the, having that safety valve there, having that one more person, because as we know right now, we're losing a couple...
Potentially two more.
Two more, you know, right away. And now we've got two going to the academy, isn't it?
We've got two in the academy right now, so we have two getting ready to go to the academy. If this position stays, it'll be three going to the academy versus two.
Okay, well, I just want to be on the record as the budget manager, as short, as short as my turn is.
Yes.
But with eight years of experience, do I get that this is not a good idea?
I appreciate it, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Pocken, so we are not cutting eight positions, this was just that plus one.
That's correct.
So we still have the current positions, which is how many officers, Chief?
Fourteen, twelve of this, we need fifteen full-time positions, over, over discussing.
Okay, so I think I have to agree with Mr. Pocken. As much as I know, we need extra people, and I would like to give us, I would love to give us back up to twenty-two or twenty-one that we had many years ago. But it's not cutting the current positions that we have, which you're still having a hard time feeling, the current positions. Correct.
I don't want to jinx anything, we have, we have four candidates right now, and I hate to even discuss it publicly, because that's the way it happens. We had six two weeks ago, we had six excellent candidates. We moved forward with all six to, to the final stages, because we knew, just looking right on the wall, we were likely we were gonna lose one or two to another agency before we had a chance to, to pick them up. And we did the first two people off our list, positions one and two, based on the ranking for the test, were picked up by other agencies and have backed away from them. So right now, we're sitting on four potential candidates. So that's kind of unique, because the last time we tested, we didn't have any, so it's just kind of hidden this. I am always recruiting, because these, these, these people, they were trying to hire right now, if we, if we hired the two, we sent them to the academy, they will be graduating the academy, or excuse me, we start the academy July twenty-ninth, July twenty-ninth, they'll start the academy, they will not be on the street scandal old officers until March. So that's a, it is a long, long period to go the way on those two positions. And that's, we're still not getting back to fourteen, we're still chasing that fourteen.
Right, and that was, that was my point, Chief, and it maybe, is that they've never been up to staff, because they've never been able to get those people out of the academy and trained before someone else leaves, so they're always behind. And that was why I was advocating plus ones, was to keep them in reality even, closer to being even, not behind.
But in, in having this conversation, and I spoke with many officers, I spoke to the chief about it before, we have people that want to stay here. So I think the bigger question is, if we raise salaries, that would help, I mean, these people, they're leaving, they're going to other agencies, because they know that right out the gate, they're, they're making a heck of a lot more than they can here, and the ones that we have would like to stay here. But if we don't do something about salaries, this is gonna be an ongoing thing, I mean, since you've been chief, this is what you've been doing, correct?
Yes, well, the lowest we got to was six. There were six of us that worked, as Mayor was explaining. That was, those were challenging times for all of us, and I've had many employees come and say, I can't do that again. It goes back to that, I'm gonna have to leave too, because it's, it's a, it's a strain on us individually, on our whole life, and of course, on the budget. But I would agree as well, they're, they're all valid arguments. The, the pay is always gonna be an issue, and the pay is an issue right now, and if we could do something about that, I would love more than to keep, I would love to keep the employees we have now, we have good employees, we have some really, really great officers. I don't want to lose them to another agency, I want them to stay here. We just don't have anything to entice them at this point in time, so...
And that was my point, I think that's the conversation that we really need to have, is what we're gonna do as far as wages for your men and women.
All right, there's no doubt about that. Zero, zero doubt about that, but that's, unfortunately, that's not the conversation we're having right now.
Well, and please keep in mind too, that one thing that we did that's, that's in this budget is start to pick up a little bit more of the premiums for health insurance. So that will help those who insure themselves to us.
But when your basic salary is not commensurate with the rest of the, of the county, you're gonna keep on losing people, and we're constantly having to play catch-up. Now, in my mind, I'm not sure, maybe what we should be talking about for this budget is an increase in the salaries, as opposed to another position. And what, and what would that cost be? Thank you, that's, you know, you're talking about...
Well, that's obviously not a question we're prepared to answer right this minute.
No, I understand that, I understand that.
The cost for a employee based on X percentage of...
And I have a feeling it's gonna be a lot more than that one position. But it's a start.
Depends on the amount of the increase.
Because right now, you've got people who are, what, nine years in, that are making like two percent more than a new person coming in.
Are they currently working...
And it's a morale issue, it's, it's, obviously, they're gonna go to greener pasture, so I'm not sure, it's almost like a chicken and egg, which one do you do first?
It is a, it is a huge issue, and we talked about this a little bit at the retreat, and the, the possibility of a step increase, and I will tell you, the folks in my shop have heard that, they've heard that conversation, and this is a conversation that they themselves have tried to initiate in most of my career. The starting pay itself is an issue, we are the lowest starting paying police department in Cochise County, everybody puts more money in. The big challenge is the step increases that go along the way, ours are five years, two percent, three percent, four percent, five percent, all the way to twenty-five years at sixty percent. That is the big issue. We have officers who, there's not a way for them to make more without just giving a blanket merit increase to everybody every couple of years, and that's, doesn't, isn't the proper way to go about things either. So I think having that conversation is definitely something we welcome, I just don't know that right now, I don't have any numbers to answer that, I'm sure, I mean, that's not something that we were trying to prepare for as we move forward with this budget process.
Okay, so where are we at? We've heard, Mr. Green.
Yes, as well. You know, the idea that, that by, with the plus one, we're, we're probably never gonna be up to the staff anyhow, because there's always going to be somebody coming or going for one reason or another. So I know the, the plus one becomes part of the budget, and it's something that, you know, that we will be stuck with, but the turnover in police department needs to be addressed, and, and we need to be prepared for that turnover. And, and the plus one helps us to be prepared for that inevitable turnover, you know, and it may not, may not be the smartest thing to do, right, sitting here at this moment, but sitting right here in this room and being out there on the street, if you hear the things, and we really do need police officers on the street. And I do understand that if, any way we can stop this, this bulk, this turnover, by having these people in the academy and having them available to us, and if people quit, what can we do? But at least there'll be a backup, that's, that's really the way I feel about it.
Well, and I know this is along the lines of what Mr. Pocken is trying to explain, once we get that fifteen, if we get to fifteen and we have it, nobody leaves, well, then we have to own that number for the next five years, no matter what, and we have to be prepared for that. I will say though, in the last four years, going through this process, each year, we've always been chasing that number that we were at, so we've never, I shouldn't say we've never, for a very short amount of time, have we been at fourteen, which is currently authorized for. We went to fifteen for about four months last year with the permission, because we knew we were losing one employee one way or another to an election, and we had his opening, and so we went ahead and did that. And then shortly thereafter, we had two retire, we had another one leave, and it's just, now we're, we're back to chasing that number again. So my hope is that if we can, if we can get the fifteenth, knowing that we're always gonna be chasing it, we might be fifteen for a short amount of time, but for the most part, that person's just giving us another body in the academy in anticipation for the next pay month.
Mr. Jack D'Amico.
I, you know, I agree with both sides of the coin, we must draw a fence here. The issue is, you know, you talk about you're always chasing that position, we're always gonna chase that position if we don't have good enough wages. I mean, why am I gonna stay? This is a stepping stone, this is gonna be the stepping block of going someplace else. So if we don't address the, the wages, it's not gonna help, even if you do get that fifteen. And how much money are we ending up spending year after year after year on training? Because, I mean, that's one of the things we've been hearing, you know, now it's gonna be a little bit more costly or that, you know, that type of thing. So, you know, I'm kind of going with, you know, with what they're talking about, we've gotta really look at paying and comparable wages, because that's an incentive to stay, and then maybe you're gonna be able to keep that fifteen percent, because why is everybody leaving?
Pay, pay is the evil...
Pay is the, you know, the evil, you know, the evil troll in our, in our situation, and if we don't address it, it doesn't gonna matter, you're gonna have your, you know, you're gonna continue to chase that position, and you fill it for how many months, until somebody else offers another carrot, so...
So where are we at? We can, we're in special session, so we can actually take a poll. Who is in favor of continuing with the plus one position? I would say I am. So we have three. Okay, and two against? I'm not putting words here about them asking.
It's not that I'm against, I mean, it's, I know, I know, I just, I know you have to say yea or nay, it's, it's not that I'm against it, so I'm very much for the position, but we're gonna be on this treadmill, and I know...
I totally understand you, and I, and I agree.
Yeah, I mean, that's my issue with that.
Well, I hope the council can dig this up this, this year and, and have some type of a resolution for the budget next year with step increases for all of our employees.
For all employees, yes. Because not just me, every, every city in the park is in the same boat.
Absolutely. So, so at this point, with respect, Mr. Pocken, we're gonna keep that position in.
No, no, it's not, it's your, it's your budget, I'll pay this over.
No, 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 I...
The, you know, let me, let me add one other suggestion then too, because you really, really have to start, you really have to start analyzing your revenues and seeing what you can do with those, okay? As I mentioned at the top of the meeting, if you look at the history of your revenues, and you go back as far as you want, they're substantially the same then, wherever then was as they are now. So adding positions, doing salary increases, doing step increases, all that other stuff is, is simply unsustainable, once you reach the point where you don't have reserves anymore.
Absolutely. There's only two ways to do a budget, make more money or you spend less.
It's a, it's a lot easier to control costs than it is to raise revenues.
Absolutely.
A whole lot easier.
So at that...
Because you're not gonna raise another dime unless you either have a kind of boost or you get the dollars to retire.
So pretty much our revenues, you say, we could have looked at it for the last five years, so it's pretty, pretty flat, up and down a little bit, but pretty much...
Without major change in, in the economy of this community, that will remain so.
It will remain so. So really realistically, we're not gonna be able to increase revenues much. I, I know, the only thing we have going here pretty much is tourism, but, and that's been flat for the last six months as well.
A little bit.
A little bit flat. So, you know, nothing is gonna rescue us. Revenue increases are unlikely to happen realistically. We have to have a police department, we can't have the police leaving every time they, they go to the academy and they're trained and they're ready, because we need experienced police officers on the street, and we need people that've been out there for a while that know what's going on, we need to retain, and the fire department, we need to retain experienced people in both police and fire, and that's, that's the two, you know, to me, that's the most important city services that we provide for the citizens. We may have to seriously take a look and get in rid of everything else.
So your toilet doesn't flush?
Fire means, so flush everything else down the toilet, have a police department, a fire department, we'll have a different city. That may be where we have to go, it sounds like to me that's where we have to go. I don't know, anybody can give me an argument to convince me that somebody's gonna come along and increase our revenue significantly, I, you know, I don't see that on the horizon. So what are we flushing? We're flushing everything but the basins. And we may have to do that. We may have to do it this year, you know, we have milk and gals this Friday. So, you know, I hate to burn that up, but that's, that may be... So, you know, I hate to bring that up, but that's, that may be a reality decision.
Mr. Pocken, Bagley, where would you like to go next?
I'm sorry?
Where would you like to go next?
That's up to you.
Let's go. Let's go from police to fire. Does anybody have anything before them? Any of the departments before them? Ms. Hanson?
Well, like I said, I went through all of the general fund accounts, and basically, and I came up with about a hundred and thirty-six thousand by just taking five thousand from here, there, and so on. For instance, in finance, under contract services, decreasing it by five thousand, forty-five to forty, books from.
What is our, what, what impact does that have? Ms. Bagley, what, what are contracts?
That's the reason I paid whatever, everything to.
Well, but if we're.
Yeah, yes.
Step before, yeah, let's talk about the impacts. Your, your contract services in finance, decreasing that by five grand, what, what does that do?
Actually, I looked at where we're gonna end up this year, and it's gonna be slightly over forty-five, so I don't think we can reduce that one. But, but the others, the other two that you mentioned, books, taking that to a thousand, and credit card fees that can come along, we're not gonna be near fourteen thousand credit card fees this year.
Is our new bank assisting with that? So those are realistic.
Long as they don't melt checks anymore.
What's a check? I'm still issued a check or two.
Yeah, yeah.
So you would reduce the credit card fees to what?
One thousand.
Reduce it from fourteen to thirteen.
And under city clerk, business travel from one point five to one thousand, and the education and training from twelve hundred to five hundred.
Have you talked to Ms. Coronado about that?
Yeah.
Okay, well, let's get the impact on that. Ms. Coronado, what, what?
The majority, the reason we're not even close to that right now, NINA goes to training before the end of the fiscal year, so that, that isn't on the books just yet. And then on every other year, I have election training, things like that, so there is a slight increase every other year. So, I mean, we can reduce it. What was business travel again? I'm sorry?
Uh, reduce it from fifteen hundred to a thousand.
So in eighteen, we were at nine nineteen, so we're gonna be close to that?
And NINA still has to.
Well, I'm sorry? Yes.
And NINA still has to travel.
Correct. So, I mean, I could see reducing.
Yeah, we, we, I would like to talk about reducing the, the election. Because barring a special election of some kind that the state of Arizona would allow us to do. This chair is like. I'd like to help it over. What's that?
Maybe that's why they were donated.
I think you've got the one that I believe you're saying.
Swap chairs. There's one right beside you.
Yeah, well, that's the other one there. Okay, yeah. What, what was that laughing where she sat in that big chair?
Edith Anne?
Yeah, I feel like Edith Anne, I think. So hopefully everyone enjoyed that, other than me.
Have you a certain age?
Maybe you, you may not be older than that.
Yeah.
All right. So anyway, I, I'd like to just suggest that realistically, that's a good cut, is it not, Asha?
It is, for next year.
And you, you suggest we cut it to what?
Ten thousand.
From?
Five, fifteen.
Fifteen. That's five grand, yeah.
Okay, I'll take that over the other.
I'll raise your blind. I'll take two curds.
Community development. I originally had contract services, and then I found out that that was the intergovernment agreement for planning and zoning. My suggestion is to take the animal shelter down five thousand from eighty to seventy-five. That's still within five thousand more than what they got last year. Oh, what, yeah, what we gave them last year. And professional fees from twelve thousand down to eight thousand.
Wow. What do, what do, what do we pay professional fees for? I mean, some of these.
Professional fees was the legal fees, and that was basically the, the legal fees for the.
Oh, professional fees, legal?
Yes, sorry. I didn't, yeah, 'cause there's the two. Yeah, I just saw that.
Nothing there.
Yeah, it's legal.
Well.
I'm sorry, you said what on the animal shelter? Down to five, from eighty to seventy-five.
I would, for the record, disagree with that, but that's for the record. I think they've certainly proven that they, they need that. The legal fees, there was nothing budgeted because we previously didn't have to worry about that. And our, I believe this is the case where our attorney had the conflict out, so we had to hire outside counsel. Is that correct? Is that correct?
No, I thought it was the, the legal fees for John Skye's.
That's because our counsel had the conflict out, and we had to go to outside counsel.
Well, we'd have to do that anyway.
What?
I mean, if we had, if we had, if we had counsel, we'd still have to do that, never mind.
No, no, because the, the funds, the, our insurance fund pays for our.
Risk.
The risk, well, thank you, paid for our part one of the fees. All I'm saying is that's an insurance policy, if you wanna put it in there. But that's also why we have a contingency fund, is because if something happens, then that's where it comes out of, instead of making it a line item in case.
Well, I'm not saying get you ready to put it all together, but just reduce it to eight thousand.
Oh, I'm saying get rid of it altogether.
Before you didn't want to get rid of it.
Pardon me? I mean, I guess we're not communicating.
I guess not, okay.
So we could reduce it by twelve thousand?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
My suggestion is that we reduce it by twelve thousand.
Okay.
Take it out.
Here are no objections.
Okay, that gives you seventeen thousand in that account. And the next one is?
Go to nine thousand.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, she's, you're, yes. Along the same lines.
Sorry, use it twenty-five hundred.
Let's talk about telephone and fax, Ms. Coronado. Where do we, where do we get that? I mean, what, I. It seems, it seems pretty high.
It might be a little high, yeah. Let me just pull the average monthly bill in real quick.
Yes, I have that.
Yes, I think that is a little high.
What gas do we have here? Do we, do we add?
I had, I had enough, three answers, I know.
All right, let me, do we have natural gas or propane here?
We have, we have selfless gas for, for probably the heat, but we don't have hot water, so.
We don't have hot water.
Technically, we should.
Yes.
I didn't say that on camera. Wow.
We'll, we'll.
We'll work on that.
That's not a budget, that's not a budget discussion.
So, yeah.
For telephone and fax, if we budget eight thousand, we'll be fine.
Okay, let's, let's cut that back to eight, thank you. I am concerned about the gas. That's a.
So we're reducing seven hundred?
That's a pretty good gas bill for presently, I would just, for heat.
Did, I'm sorry, did anybody bother to pull the, right, the, the bills from the juvenile?
Yeah, but the problem we had with that was it was a twenty-four hour operation.
Yeah, seven six.
And, and so the bills were pretty skewed. I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna guess on that. I just know that there, there should be a cushion there.
So can we reduce it just a bit, by a thousand maybe?
If gas is what you're depending on for heat, I would.
Well, we got electric.
We all have Mon John's. We all have Mon John's.
Yeah, but we're on.
Yeah.
I know we can't use the space heaters in that building.
The electrical can't handle it.
Oh.
I have never liked space heaters.
No.
No wonder.
Now they're gonna have air fire waiting out. I'm sorry. I said, yes, you did. Okay.
I, I have something for the property casualty liability.
Yes.
I got an email from our insurance company. We're gonna receive a sixty thousand dollar dividend this year, which will be applied to the premium, so this can come down by sixty thousand.
Cool, nice.
So that'll be ninety, yeah? I would, I would appreciate it if you would come up with ten more of those.
She's known this for weeks. She's been dying.
Come on me, come on me. Well, good job, Ms. Bagley.
And you did say gas were leaving alone, correct?
Yeah, I don't know what to do with it.
I think you should.
I might be wanting to wait until.
Yeah. Yeah, I just really don't know what to do with that.
What are the contract services? That we have nine thousand four hundred for?
Xerox and pest control and those monthly expenses.
Okay, okay, so those are pretty set. And what is the transfer to the airport?
That was to help the airport balance our budget. They were three thousand three fifty-four short. There's thirty-three fifty-four in the airport revenue transferring from general fund.
They're currently third, third, three hundred short?
Well, that's the projection for next fiscal year.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay. They've also got a use of fund balance of eight hundred, eight thousand five hundred and twenty-two.
But that's all their fund balance, so they, that would wipe out their fund balance, and then they would need additional.
All right.
I, I think that was mostly for building repairs, or that's what it went on.
Right, is this, is this a, right, we had, we had talked about, and said there's money there, and they, they had to use it. And so apparently they have, or will be, or?
Yeah, well, there's, there's anticipation of some further repairs to be made at the eternal building of the home into next year as well. So, I don't, and I don't, and, and the, the city owner here also has a skeleton of a restroom and storage facility in it that was never completed. And I doubt that will be completed this fiscal year.
Right, we'll be coming to the council with some information in the future about the airport.
There will be some fairly intense discussion about how the airport is run prior to my second term.
Correct. You said the legal thing. Okay, on personnel?
On personnel. I, my suggestion was to cut, I don't think that we're gonna find someone for personnel, at least until the first of the year. And my suggestion is to cut that salary budget in half. Now, but after talking to Karen this afternoon, you said that you, you've got the expenses from Joel going over to personnel? Do we know about what that's coming up to?
If, if you don't mind my interrupting.
I would appreciate that, yes.
The, the, the fact of the matter is, is that I, I plan to have that position filled by the first of the fiscal year.
Oh.
And, and I think that's just about exactly the right amount of money.
Okay. You have one?
Thank you.
You had inside information.
It's, actually, he did have inside information. On this one. And, you know, I'm, I'm treading lightly here, because there's people on the staff I need to talk to that because of everybody going on vacation, including me, haven't been able to round it all up.
Okay.
News at nine.
Okay. All right, so, that's a wash. Water systems? The equipment for cares and maintenance, I was looking at, cutting that by five thousand?
I don't have a problem with that. We just don't know. You know, that's a well. So, and we know well, well, much cost. So, assuming that, that we don't have that well issue, you know, there'll be practically nothing like it has been.
When's the last time you really know?
I don't know if there's anybody here that knows the last time we replaced that well pump, or the motor.
Unfortunately, it probably is part of the time.
Right.
I mean, I can remember doing it one time when I worked here, but I doubt that it's been done in the near, near five years. So it's, it's, it's there. It doesn't work as hard as the pumps in wastewater, obviously. But it's just something we don't know, and that's why we have contingency. So I'm, I'm a griddle of dropping five down the ten.
Anybody?
Okay, and I think we're up to fire then, since we already talked about police. So, you get fired?
Did you have anything else on police as far as suggestions? You should let, should necessarily let Al be told about that.
Actually.
I'm gonna.
Chief.
I'm gonna say something about DOC workers, not because I wanna change anything, but because I just wanna call attention to the fact that we have DOC workers budgeted in several places in the budget, and that we do make use of inmate workers to the absolute degree that we can. You know, of course, depending on how, how much is available, whether there's checkers or not, whether there's people who are supervising or not. I've had several questions over the past couple of months from people, you know, who can't believe that we don't use inmate workers because we've got a prison close by. I just wanted to get it on the record that we do budget for inmate labor, and we do use the workers to the degree possible. I just wanted to get it on the record that, uh, we do budget for inmate labor and we do use the workers to the degree possible.
I have a question, uh, with the police. Why are they getting charged for animal control services when there's the other shelter and stuff?
So the animal control expense, that is for our animal control officer. So, although the shelter where the animals are housed, once they're captured or dealt with, um, they have that. But, uh, I have the personnel under my budget as the, uh, the actual animal control officer. So for her supplies, for her equipment that she needs, um, that's her, for her equipment. So it doesn't get used at the shelter, it's used on the street.
So vaccines then to our human, not now?
Yeah.
Depends on what you pay?
I have, I have a couple of questions.
Um, on contract services, uh, it went from a budget of four thousand, although I see we spent fourteen already this year, to thirty-six thousand, what is that for?
That is for the vehicles that we're leasing from Cochise County.
And you anticipate that that's gonna be thirty-six thousand this year? Are, are you leasing, i- is there additional vehicles that are being leased?
There, there are.
Okay.
And there, majority of our fleet is now owned by, uh, or is now, we're now paying Cochise County a fee to use. And so, this being the first year doing it, um, and we only have, I think, uh, this next month will be the first month we have all vehicles built. It was hard to take and budget for what we're gonna use when I haven't even had all the vehicles, you know, made yet. So, uh, we try to keep a, a, a number in there that was gonna be, um, reasonable. Our other concern is too, is a disagreement with Cochise County. Uh, there's been some concerns as well as to how effective that's working, or how long that's gonna continue to work. There're definitely gonna be some changes coming to that later. I'm not aware exactly what those changes are at this point, but there's a discussion going on between us and the county on how to, uh, make this as effective as possible. And how to protect them as well as it protects us. At the same time, we still have numerous vehicles in our own fleet. When those county vehicles, uh, goes down for an accident, uh, they do have a hundred eighty thousand miles, uh, a hundred seventy-five thousand miles, every one of them has that or more. There's a major repair that goes down and that vehicle's out of service for an extended period of time. We're back into our old stock, uh, driving those vehicles and, and so there's still, you'll still see, not knowing what we're gonna have, what we're gonna spend, because this is the first year for it. There is a little bit more money still you'll see in, uh, vehicle, uh, maintenance, uh, and also fuel. We don't pay fuel on the county vehicles, that's covered by, uh, Cochise County right now. But that's one of those items that I feel is gonna change, we're gonna have to pay for all the gas, um, as this thing goes forward. So I wanted to make sure that we're still have budgeted tons for fuel, uh, as well as covering the cost for the contract services.
Good. I've got some questions, are you, are you finished?
Um, the, yes.
Chief, uh, I would like, I, I have the explanation, but I'd like you to indicate what the explanation is for the big jump in business travel, please.
So business travel? Uh, as, as most people are aware, um, the academy that we've used, uh, probably for the past, well, say safely, for the past eight years, uh, the academy that we've used has been, uh, the Tucson Police Academy, Soletti. And all this time, uh, the cost to attend that academy or to send cadets to that academy for training, uh, it's been free. There was no cost. All we had to pay for was the vehicle to get them there and their salaries while they were attending. That changed this year, they increased their cost from zero to fifteen thousand dollars per cadet, uh, is what they wanted to charge. So, uh, we didn't send anybody to that academy this year because we couldn't afford, pay for it. But, uh, Phoenix Regional, uh, up in Phoenix, their academy is still free, uh, they're not charging anything at all. We've reached out to new, several academies. The problem with Phoenix Regional is they didn't have any housing, uh, so we had to pay for housing for the two cadets that are there now. That came out to roughly about five thousand dollars per cadet, which was still savings compared to Soletti. This year, or this next academy that we're hoping to get some cadets into, uh, starting the end of July, is it here in Cochise College? That academy has a price tag of thirty-five hundred per cadet. So, um, it's, it's still close, but the concern is now, right now, we have four candidates. That number could drop down to one by the end of day-to-day. We just don't know what we're gonna end up at with, when, when it's time to go to the academy. So, once we send them, um, if we don't have enough to fill our books, then we're gonna start recruiting again and then we'll be looking for the next academy. Well, Cochise College won't have another academy until January. And if we wait to hire somebody till January, now we're just pushing ourselves even that much further. So we would be looking again for the next available academy, and there might be a cost, uh, again with that, so that's why that number's there. Hopefully, we won't have to use, uh, all of it, but we wanna be prepared for, uh, just in case.
I, I just wanted to make sure that people understood that, that, that you weren't going to the Bahamas.
No, this, not this, no, just, no, I meant saying, we're still, yeah, we're still saving money. Even though we spent, sent them to Phoenix and it cost a little bit for the housing, that was still a cost savings in doing that. And, um, the other good news, we did try to do this, we almost had an agreement worked out with Sierra Vista for a cost share, uh, 'cause they had two candidates going up, we're gonna get one place and share the cost between the four of us. And their two candidates washed out of the background process and they ended, they ended up not sending anybody. So, we're, even though we have that this time, we're still always looking, um, to partner, uh, to work together with another agency to try to find that cost savings.
Thank you. Uh, internet access fees. It appears that, um... Well, I guess, no, the entire last year was, uh...
I'm talking special election. I'm gonna get you the chair.
Sorry, I have to learn how to use it.
You're the only one having the issue.
So the, the internet access fees, um, there was a change in how that was being billed on the budget. Last year, that was coming out of the cellphone usage, and that's why that number was so high. Once we sat down, Cindy, uh, explained that that was two separate, the cellphone and the, the, uh, Verizon hotspot internet that we use are two separate things, and they had to be split into two different lineups, so that's why the difference between those two.
And contract services are what? Pest control, et cetera, et cetera?
That's the vehicle.
That's the vehicle.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And there's also a few other things, uh, copier, pest control, you know, things like that as well.
Right, operational expense? We've, we've only used thirty-five hundred, thirty-four hundred dollars.
I think that was, uh... I apologize, I don't have my notes here, I, I believe the operational expense was spilling, one of those numbers is spilling that we haven't been, uh, billed for yet, but there's a...
That we're going to?
Yes.
Okay, that's probably true. Alright, capital expenditures, what are you trying to buy next year?
So capital expenditures are fifty thousand dollars we'd asked for, um, during the process, again. For several, several years now, um, my, my department, like, uh, every other department here in the city, we've been, we've shorted ourselves for, uh, new equipment. The, the same radar unit that I started with twenty years ago as a police officer is still in service today. Whether or not it works the same, well, who knows? But there's a, there's a lot of things that we're, we're short on now. I asked for that number specifically tasers, radars, and tough looks.
Right.
Now, again, this number, uh, it's, uh, was a wish list, if you will. If, if need be, uh, with the grant process that Firewise Group are working on, um, trying to get our radio system rebuilt and then also pay for the infrastructure that had held in the mobile radios. If for some reason that fell short or didn't succeed, I wanted to have enough money to at least cover the cost of the microwave system that I tried to get last year. Because that is the single point of failure for our infrastructure right now. The microwave hop goes out, our radios are no longer functioning, uh, we're, we're dead no longer. So, now the hope was that then if the grant came through and we didn't have the cost or the need for the radios and that would be used for tasers. We also applied for a taser grant, if the taser grant came through, then we would use that money for, um, probably the Dell rugged books is something we were looking into, um, something along those lines. So, again, that's, uh, that was my, uh, wish list, if you will.
So you're, what you're indicating is the money would be used, it just, there's a hierarchy about what you're gonna use it for, depending on...
I don't have enough money to use it for everything I need, so I wanna take pieces and, and use it, um, you know, for as much as we, the biggest bang we can get out of that.
Right, a- a- again, part of this is for people to understand what, why these numbers were in there. Because some people think, you know, wow, that's, so, that, that answered my questions, please.
I, I'd just like to add one thing, is the, um, my, uh, Michael, the, the...
The microwave?
Yeah, it is microwave, okay. There's no redundancy whatsoever, and, um, they, it would cost them at least twenty thousand and we can't just bet that we're gonna get the, the, um, the grant. So having at, at least twenty in there, um, in order to, to make sure that we do have a, a good microwave.
Yes, because, um, so because that's a single point of failure, it's failed on us once, um, two years ago. And, uh, when they came to repair it, luckily they were able to repair it. Um, actually, they unplugged it, plugged it back in and it came back to life. Even the technician was surprised that happened. And he told us then, when this goes, there's no parts, there's no repairing it, you have to, you, you have to replace the entire microwave hop at that point. Now, at that time, the cost was well over, uh, seventy thousand dollars. We tried to get, uh, funding through Stone Garden to cover that, they, we didn't get it from them. And, and we tried to get the money in the budget last year, it, it just wasn't there. The cost has come down significantly in the, the cost of those hops. And the current plan that we have to build, uh, the system that Firewise is trying to get built for us, uh, will have redundancy built in, so if one part of that fails, the second part will automatically take over and let us know that it failed so we can get it fixed. Right now, when it fails, the only way we know is when you try to talk and the radio doesn't work. And by then it's too late, so that's what we're looking for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any more, please. Anybody else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chief, please deal, come on down. You were hoping the call to the board would come through, but it didn't.
I was going with it.
I was watching, I was watching. Alright, anybody else wanna start before, uh, I have some questions?
I have a fine line.
Alright, well, go ahead. The, uh, train, uh, education and training?
That's my question.
Just, just wondering, uh, why the, what you're planning there to cut, to give us that jump?
Okay, um, the reason I raise it up is now every time we hire somebody, uh, we are sending them through paramedic programs. So the only way we seem to be able to get paramedics to apply for the, the job here because of the pay. So, um, currently, right now, we have, uh, two students in the paramedic program. One, one new person that we hired, but that, their education was already paid for. We're just going for one, and just, uh, another one's enrolled now and just started school. So, is to train, we have to, just in case, we have to, uh, send more people to paramedic, uh, schooling. And then plus we have the, uh, trauma conference that we usually send, uh, individuals to, and then we have state fire school. Usually with state fire school, we put in for an educational grant, we usually improve that every year. It needed to be, I could cut some of that education budget, but I just bumped it up just in case, I didn't wanna roll in case, sending people to school for that.
Okay, realistically, is it, is, that's all I'm after, is, is realistically, is it twenty grand or is it realistically fifteen?
Probably fifteen, I just upped it to twenty just on the state side. But if I need to cut five thousand out of that...
Can you live with five thousand cut? This is, we don't wanna, we're not gonna cut the training short for your partner.
Right.
But if, if there's an extra five grand there, then...
Yeah, 'cause it's just, right now, the, the state, you know, there's just so many new things coming out, we're about to get certified. And we send this guy, I just sent guys to school, but that was a, a grant through Cochise County, um, we saw them to pay with Swiftwater Rescue. That was, I had to pay for that, but that's all being reimbursed. So some of the stuff I have to pay upfront and get reimbursed. But again, we just upped it because there is, uh, a lot more things coming up with the guys needing training and education. And one of the other things too is the Cochise College right now, it's getting rid of the firefighter one-two program.
Oh.
So, uh, we're in conjunctions right now, 'cause we have instructors, we might be bringing in a class here at Bisbee and then charging people for that, so we're gonna stay there. We might be an educational center at Bisbee.
Without a tower?
I won't be using, uh, Palomino's is fine, Tom. Tell you guys, it's a lot of them, but...
Mayor, I got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Regarding the, uh, uh, paramedic school, doesn't that run ten thousand, about ten thousand dollars though?
Pretty close to that.
Okay, so if you...
It works around six, eight, ten, just a...
So between eight and ten? And see, I don't know, but I, I mean, I, I think I'd be opposed to cutting it five thousand, 'cause you're gonna cut yourself short. And I, and I guess, maybe, you know, everybody needs to understand that the only way we can do transfers, which is our revenue maker, is by having paramedics.
What about...
Right. But...
Ninety percent of most of the transfers are ALS transports.
Well, absolutely, that's why I'm saying that the, the paramedics...
We do get a few basic transport calls, a couple more, you know, non...
If it, if, if it'll help you, I, I was not pushing the five thousand, I was, I was talking to you.
Okay, well, by the time I'm out, out of it.
It was the, um, George, just, just asking about your rationale for cutting five thousand dollars? Is that because in the next twelve-month period, starting July first, you're not gonna spend it? Or is, if you've got somebody already in training?
While we plan...
Or, or you've got somebody else, somebody else paid for somebody else's training? I mean, what's, because if it's a ten thousand dollar bill, then twenty thousand dollars is the only number that makes sense. But if we're already partially paid, this is for here.
Could, couldn't you easy, easy, easier, could, would it be easier if you cut it maybe from your operational expense? Because you've jumped down, up eight thousand, or seventy-five hundred there, and, you know, previously gear was only twelve-five hundred and, you know, you've only done sixty-four hundred so far.
I'll hit the operational expense, the reason we raised that up is because, um, for any iPads, I, I tough looks, psych alberdos for our medic, and it's, right now, um, I think we've, we've got one computer that we got from Ashley and then that old tough one, we're really short on those, that's how we do paperwork. And also, if we don't get our grant for our SEBUs and cascade system, I might have to purchase a couple of Airbags. The good thing with the cascade system, our cascade system will help, our compression, everything. The city of Douglas, um, we got a new one and they actually brought those down to us. So, they're not charging us for it, they're pretty much saying, use it as long as you want, it's just we have to get it hooked up. So that's what I just wanna say, let's money on it.
I, you know, so as you go down further too, you have building repair and maintenance. And that's jumped quite substantially. Is your building finally let down?
Yes.
The buildings have been lacking for a long time. But if you like to go take a tour, especially a stationing tour in Old Bisbee, like you can see, there's, uh, there actually might be even mold in that station right now, but there's been, uh, a leak up there. I already paid for a roof to get done, so the city guys did that. But there's, the floors still need to be done, may need work, may need to be replaced.
Yeah, we were encouraging that, that...
And then also our station here, uh, of course, we're all working on a grant with Daniela, uh, like a Lowe's grant, and things for appliances and getting our kitchen ready, so we're all... and with Ailes for appliances, and getting our kitchen ready, so we're all, we're hoping that we get that grab, but we just upped it just in case we still need to, uh, disrepair it.
No, I was just trying to look at other, you know, see, we have to say, great in education, guys.
But did you get your, did you get your question answered?
No, I didn't, it's, uh, past the border.
But, no, well, no, I, I still have the, the, a question of how many people are you looking at going to paramedic school? I mean, how many people?
Right now, I have one, that same classroom now.
But they're in?
Yeah, they're in, and by the next budget, they open up another class, I believe it's in, um, September, October, and we, we usually send another person to.
How, how many people do you have right now that need to go to paramedic school?
Right now, we have one that's just finished.
But, but he's in?
Yes, he's in.
So, you don't have anybody else that's waiting to go to paramedic school?
Not right now, not until later on in the year, when the class starts. This year, we just budgeted for one, we sent one. We already have two in class right now, that was previous before, and again, one of the employees we have, before we hired her, she was already in the paramedic.
Okay.
That's one reason why we hired her, is she's in the paramedic.
Is this from new hires, or are you talking about current?
It's current right now, it's a, uh, we provide the seniority to, we'll go down and see who wants to go. If somebody that's on the seniority list wants to go to Mexico, we will send them first. But if they don't, we just kinda go down the list. But we do ask every new employee, one of the old ones question, the, the city to provide you, uh, to attend paramedic program, would you accept unless they guess? And that's just one way of, uh, they committed to that, to go to the paramedic, so we can give paramedics.
Okay.
And I will, and I will remind that, once they sign that contract and they go to paramedic school, then they owe us for the two years.
Two years, correct?
Yes.
Um, no, and I, and I understand that, but you're full up right now, correct?
Full of the paramedics.
No, with, with, um, your.
Yeah, so right now, um, I'm not sure.
Well, no, not.
Right now, yeah.
Employees. I'll get the word personnel. So, what you're doing now is going back to those people that wanna go to paramedic school. And how many paramedics do we have right now?
Uh, let's see, if we blew, I think we have eight. And then we'll have two more, uh, certified, I think, in September.
Okay.
And then we just have the one that just started. So, probably when the next class starts, after this graduation, September, they'll be able to even up the course again, and we have someone that's available, available to.
Well, see, I don't want you to be the only one that we don't pull money from.
We're not finished.
Oh, my God.
So far, please, so far, I don't think we pulled anything from.
No.
Yeah, we did, no. Oh, no, we did, we did, yeah, we did, no, we did.
We started to, we didn't change something.
On, on our list here of the twenty employees, we've only got six paramedics, plus the two that are in school now. So, that would bring us to, to eight, so we only have six paramedics. Well, how'd you come up with two? Because there's two that are in class now.
So, so. So, the, the twenty grand is, is enough for approximately three more people?
Correct.
Yeah, six paramedics.
And then the two that you have in now.
Correct. And that's better than we had probably about four years ago, we were gonna have three paramedics.
Is this the highest that you've been for a while?
So far.
Now, I guess here's the, the loaded question, are there any possible departures on the horizon? It's gonna.
That's possible, uh, the other departments right now, you know, everybody's, they're going through their phases of retirements, and budgets like now, where they're asking for more personnel. So, and the thing about these other departments, they will send, uh, they'll fax flyers, and they'll send emails that they're hiring, which kinda draws the attention of some of our employees.
Okay, my, my, my question is, Ed, when we cut down to it, what, what did we decide the cost of the chassis was for ambulances?
Uh, Lieutenant Edman has been working on that with this, uh, she's right now giving us a quote for a brandy, complete outfit, medic unit, and also a rechance. Uh, we're looking at by cap, uh, depending on government deal or whatever, you can move around fifty, sixty, seventy.
Okay, what I'm, what I'm wondering is, uh, under the, uh, this, this transfer to capital reserve, uh, Miss Bagley, was that not the amount that we were deciding to put in annually? For ambulances, etc.?
Ambulance and equipment.
Correct. So, my, my question is that if we drop that to fifty, then certainly every two years, that gives you a, a unit.
Even if you did a lease purchase, I'm not sure that would be a year, maybe twenty-seven thousand.
Right, right. So, I, I would, I would like to propose that that gets dropped to fifty. And then, under equipment, although it's, um, where's disposable tools and equipment? Six grand, was, is part of that, for some reason, it's, I think, part of that is wild, wild land.
Yeah, it's just, it's just, turn to those tools that we need, when we buy axes, uh, anywhere from wild land tools to nozzles.
And the reason I'm bringing that up, chief, is because the money collected from wild land is going for equipment for wild land, and so, we're potentially double dipping here. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Well, what about their other tools?
Well, I'm, well, I'm talking about six thousand dollars.
We're also, um.
Well, we spent five hundred and fifty this year, we saved, yes, whatever.
When we do this, uh, right now, we have been going out on appointments on the other side of the tunnel, the Banning Creek, doing inspections, so once that's all done, and that money starts coming in, I believe that's supposed to also go into a line item for.
And that's my point.
Of weapons as well.
Yes, sir, that, that's my point exactly, is, is that money is going to wild land equipment, so we don't, what, whatever you think the six thousand dollars represents in wild land equipment, we can cut out. Can we not? Miss Bagley, does that?
Yeah, that's, that's for.
Because we got forty, uh, under wild land equipment, or under wild land equipment already.
And part of that is, you know, just their, their travel expenses, that fuel and stuff, but that usually doesn't come to that much.
Correct.
See, I've got a question on the, on the capital reserve that you were talking about. Wasn't the money coming from there, and I know there's nothing in there right now, but wasn't that supposed to be the percentage off of every transfer that was gonna go into, um, into this fund for vehicle replacement?
You know, we originally talked about percentage, and then what, what, for, how much percent of what? And then how many, how do you budget that versus a flat amount that will come from, um, the, is, is going to be put in there from the money that, that comes in?
And I think.
I mean, we're doing the same, it's coming out of the same pot, it's just that one is a flat rate amount, and one is an amount that we have to lick your finger and put it up to the wind to decide how much it is, based on, A, the percentage, and B, the number of transfers. So, that's why we came up with an amount.
Right, and that was, that was the average, correct, Carrie? The seventy-five thousand, wasn't that?
I, no, I think that was just something that we came to an agreement on. Because, you, you know, when you looked at even ten percent of a million dollars, it was a huge amount. You could buy an ambulance every year with that, which didn't necessarily make sense.
But the, but that money is still going into that line item to be used only for equipment, correct? I mean, that was the, that was the whole thing.
Well, it's going, it's.
I mean, I know it's.
Yeah, it goes into the general fund, and we're pulling, my proposal is fifty out of, basically, earmarking fifty of that general fund for capital, for the fire department.
But I didn't think that was the agreement, I thought it was a percentage, or whatever flat number or percentage, of every transfer to be put into a line item, not to go into the general fund, but to be put into a line item in the fire department for replacement of vehicles or whatnot. And now, that percentage that's being pulled, or that flat number from each transfer, was not to go into the general fund. That was the whole purpose of it, going into a separate line item.
That came up, but I don't, I don't remember ever saying that that's what we were going to do.
Well, it was a work session, so we couldn't.
Well, we could, yeah.
But that's definitely what.
I think there might have been talk about the billable miles, uh, going into a.
That's correct.
There was a discussion, but let me further complicate your day.
Okay.
The, um, technically, um, revenue that's generated for this type of thing is off-budget, that's a balance sheet item. Now, the procedure for doing that, after we agree on how much it should be, needs to have, be a discussion between finance office and the auditor, so it's properly accounted for. Uh, because the way you're doing it right here, uh, there's no guarantee that it won't disappear at the end of the fiscal year. So, if you, if you really want a reserve fund, it has to be off-balance, off-budget.
Right. It's a carryover.
It's a, it's a balance sheet item.
Correct.
Which doesn't also have to be in.
All we have to agree on, and, and I, I get, and I get where you're coming from, um, but unfortunately, we can only work in dollars. So, it, it, what would be helpful is if the council could agree on what that amount should be. If it exceeds that amount, we can always make an adjustment in the next fiscal year's budget.
So, then that, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, then that reserve is, needs to be transferred out, is what you're saying?
Yeah, technically, it should never hit the budget in the first place, but I, I, again, I get where you're all coming from, because right now, you can see what we're gonna do. The way we do it is gonna be different.
So, how would, how would you account for that then in the budget?
It's not gonna be accounted for in the budget, it's gonna be accounted for in the balance sheet.
Okay. But it'll still be there?
It'll still be there, if you tell us to put it there.
Okay.
And, and, and then it'd be carried over and used.
Right.
In a budget, at, at the end of the year, it's gone.
Right.
So, this.
When you're ready to spend the money, then Carrie needs to go through another procedure to make sure that it's spent.
So, then do you do the same thing with the grant match also, or is that something different?
Uh, no, if you're gonna have it, if, 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 if you're, if you're awarded a grant, and it's gonna be spent in this fiscal year, then the dollars need to be available in the budget to spend.
So, then technically, if we took that seventy-five thousand out, divded that, and it's there, he knows he has it if he needs it, right? Then that's gonna drop his budget substantially, right?
But we also have a transfer in to the revenue of seventy-five thousand, so it really cancels itself out.
Right, for purposes of the budget, what, what you got here is you've got a seventy-five thousand dollar revenue, you've got a seventy-five thousand dollar expenditure already built in. So, essentially, we'd have to take both of those items out, and we'd end up in the same place.
But, but it's coming, is, isn't that coming, coming from part of your revenue? So, how are you, how are you gonna account for that in your revenue in your budget?
Because it's going off-budget.
It's going off.
It's not included in the budget.
That's, that's the magic.
It's included on the balance.
That's the magic of finance.
No, well, okay, I, I understand that, but then, is, but isn't that the ambulance, um, fees that are going up? That, so you're gonna have to take seventy-five thousand out of that?
The procedure is gonna be different, okay? But if you tell us that that's what you want us to do, then we'll make it happen during the audit process.
Oh, we're, oh, we're really discussing, they are taking care of the financial, we're discussing how much.
Those, transfers, you're not gonna be done.
Okay, I got it.
With this doc, you're gonna be done with the audit.
And I'm suggesting.
It's like.
And you're gonna see that when you get your audit report in December.
Okay.
And I'm suggesting that it be changed to fifty thousand instead of the seventy-five thousand.
Okay, well, that's up to you guys.
Well, you're not taking that, whether it's a hundred dollars off of each transfer, or ten percent, or which it would be if, if our ambulance transfers are, uh, over, well, over a thousand, and if we take a hundred off of each transfer and put it in that separate line item for vehicle replacement? Or, you know, so, how do we average that?
That's what I'm saying, that's where you come up with a figure versus averaging it. Uh, what happens if something happens and all of a sudden you get no transfers?
Well, if it's.
Unlikely, but what I'm indicating, on the, uh, the Douglas Hospital situation, and the transfers drastically change for a period of time. So, a figure is something that you have to work with versus a, maybe it's more than that, maybe it's less than that, and so forth. The fire department can actually, although it's not in the budget, they can budget from that known figure.
So, how far back is that gonna set him as far as, or them as far as being able to replace? How soon do you need to replace that vehicle?
Sure.
So.
The options are going with a cabin chassis and.
Right, I know, I'm saying.
Exchange the box for a line item.
But, you know, if we cut it back, is that gonna, you know, cause a problem, having to wait another year or another? You know, I mean, these are, there are in dire need for that equipment now. I mean, is, if we cut that, is that gonna set it back down much farther? That's my question, well, that's setting back another year, or will they be able to still get it this year?
There's still the, the thirty thousand in there for a transfer to the debt service, and that's about the cost of a annual home payment for an ambulance.
Correct.
On, on our lease purchase agreements, that's about what, I'm just. Do we have any?
Not really, that was just the last one.
Okay, so, transfer to debt service of thirty thousand dollars, you don't have, apparently, we don't have, we don't have any debt.
Correct.
My finance director, we, we don't owe anything, so.
Right.
Um.
That's a different.
I'm gonna make a suggestion here, and, and I don't think this will complicate your day.
I hope not.
If, if, if you're serious about getting into, um, trans, uh, to, to equipment replacement fund, okay? You would be advised not to do both, put money in a, in a equipment replacement fund, and borrow money over a period of time. Um, so, um, you know, you can do what you want, but it would seem to me that the whole point of that is to get away from financing vehicles and essentially spending more money, 'cause you got interest payments. So, I would say, it's just my suggestion, leave it at seventy-five thousand dollars and then cross out the thirty.
With that, thank you, that makes more sense.
Well, the thirty, the thirty's real dollars. So, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, because the thirty is real dollars off the bottom line, and the other is balance sheet.
Because if that's what you're, that's where you're going in the future, then don't, don't try to do both, or.
Don't drink.
Don't burn a candle at both ends. Okay, is that an agreement?
Right.
You got that, chief?
Yeah.
So, that way, if, if our cabin chassis and rebox ends up being sixty, we're still covered. Okay. Is, you guys have any questions yet?
I'm finished with them.
Is that what you guys are looking for, uh, right now, is just the cabin chassis, or?
Well, if that's the case, then we just made a decision on that. And I know, in the past, we've tried either or, uh, and we always end up buying a whole rig, so it's best just to have a direction and follow it, I think.
You know, our last one was, uh, was, uh, the, the, or, this box was, uh, was checked out.
Yeah, we had a, we had a.
And we refurbished the box.
From the hospital, but, um, that one actually wasn't done right, 'cause we actually had, we had issues.
Yeah, that's true.
Had to put a suspension on it, and also the cabinets have got cracks in it. I don't know what that got going, but.
Okay, um, something to think about. Okay, um, something to think about. You have both a revenue and an expenditure for wildland fire service expenses, and they're both forty thousand dollars. And shouldn't this be more like our ambulance system? Shouldn't we be generating more revenue than expenditures?
Well, it'd be nice, but we don't, we don't know yet. We, we know.
Well, because we know with ambulance fees, and I know, we know from the state how much we can charge for a wildland firefight, and we should be able to estimate pretty well what our expenditures can be based on, on specific incident or number of incidents. The reason I'm saying this is because, you know, I can remember going back to when I really worked here, discussing this equipment replacement issue, and, and now, just after ten years or so of discussion, do we, um, you know, I think that the wildland fire service expenditure should be set up the same way we set up transfers and, I don't know, costs. There should be an anticipation of more revenue than expenditure. Now, you can tell me you're not gonna do it, and that's the end of the discussion, or we can either increase revenues or reduce expenditures to fit what we think is gonna happen, because, and the reason, the only reason I'm saying that is because I know how old some of the equipment is, because I was around when it was bought. And so you're gonna have equipment replacement issues there too, and because, like ambulance fees, wildland fire fees are proprietary revenue, it should be treated like a business.
That was only done because we, we had no idea. We just started last year, really, on wildland.
Well, I get that, because I see, I, I see what we've generated, and, and it's gonna be, to some degree, it's gonna be dependent on the season.
Yeah, well.
Kind of season.
Well, that and subscription service goes in here also.
Okay.
And that's what we don't know, other than it's gonna be very popular, and as the chief says, already calls on it, and so.
Which is good news.
You know, baseline inspection so far on the.
How many?
We've done one, we'll be up two, seven, for the next few weeks.
But you have a baseline that you can kind of project out, that you can predict, you know, a big, a possible prediction as to revenue, or not.
Mayor, it doesn't have to be a wide gap.
Oh, yeah, right.
We should just anticipate we're gonna run this.
I agree. When we discussed it, we just put the figure in to make it balance out. So you are absolutely correct.
Mayor, um, on, on the wildland, this was, the line item was put in because, well, a couple of years ago, we had crews out on several different fires. Of course, we don't know the, what the fire season's gonna be, but I mean, these guys were going to California and everywhere else, so I mean, it's kind of hard to, to predict, but it's, it's not just, you know, in this area, we could be sending people out to different states and stuff like that, so.
I had a similar circumstance with the tanker base in Princeville, and there was a propensity on, on kind of season, yeah. Right now, there are a lot of these here up there that we aren't out here. That will change at home.
Yeah, will change.
Yes.
Already is. So what, so. We, we were, we came up with forty based on a guesstimate, but, so we'd go with Mr. Bob, and we went thirty-five for expenses, and that.
I would add to the revenue side before I would.
And so, well, I think we can realistically.
You know, there are more here from now than you know now, but, you know, I think there should be at least, I mean, five thousand dollars should be the least of which you end up with, I think.
I, I'd be comfortable with adding five thousand dollars.
And that, that starts the process for future years. You will remember, that's why you did that, so.
Well, we'll have a better handle on it in just a couple of months, but that's gonna be too late to do that.
Well, yeah, the fiscal year starts.
Exactly, exactly.
So let's add five thousand dollars on the revenue side.
No pressure, Chief. Better get out there right now.
As the state closes.
And you know they will.
Well, and on, on the other hand, if, if we have a, if we have a line here, we'll have the expenses.
That's right.
They're going out of state is based on if they have an engine boss that they will get out. One is a train, but he's not certified yet, so we do have a contract with the firefighter company. We, they're engine boss, but then we have to pay them thirty percent. Last year, we had one of the state employees, state fire, go with us, and we just picked up their hotel, like, to stay with the guys and help them with the bills, but pretty much it was free.
Sorry, it's, it's on topic, but it's like, have we been paid completely on our wildland?
I think we just received another payment, so I think it's a forty-eight, that was one.
Okay, for the, the California one? Okay, just, that's good, because they, the feds would know California's money.
Yeah, I think it should show in the, may find.
They, the police are overbilled, and, uh.
Now, but that money that's collected for the wildland, does that go into our budget, or is it still going to the judge?
We, we, we talked.
Well, it's here and like and like, George.
Right.
There it is.
Right, yeah.
Right. If, if we collect forty-two, you're, you're getting forty.
So with this forty now, when you wanna get rid of the, I'm saying, your, it's all the tools and all, I can order wildland, but with that forty, that's.
Which is correct. Yeah, that's what it's for.
Okay. I've been using the, to order stuff, or we just have to order, uh, chain, I do chainsaw for wildland, so no troubles, but I held off, because we would get the lowest.
I suggest not until July one.
Don't make that leap.
Or at least over the bill.
Yeah.
Delay billing.
It's, it's like.
Whatever Kerry tells you.
So where does one send a person for engine boss training?
Where's what now?
Engine boss school.
Where does one send a person to engine boss?
Become an engine boss, you, you do have to go through some of the courses. A lot of it's hands-on stuff. You have to get out on these fires and get your task books signed out. They do have a program at the state where they can go ride with the state as well, but lately, you know, we've been kind of short-stamped, and we haven't been able to give up an employee to ride on the state engine. But, um, it's just pretty much getting out there. The only way they can get their task book signed is getting out on fire. They, they have so many courses they have to take, but then a lot of it, most of it's hands-on stuff that you get signed off by a certified engine boss.
And we have a piece of donated equipment that.
The Hardwood Hardwood J T.
Gonna provide us money.
The only way we can get our guys signed off is if we start getting calls from the wildland. So that's why we, you know, in the state, we worked with the state already. They're very pleased with our work, and how we do, so if they need us, and we, they call us out, they should have somebody that'll be able to listen. And as soon as the fire season's over here, that's most likely where we're gonna be sent out.
And, and the more that, that you're doing, and the better reputation you get, the more you're gonna be called out, so it's all good.
So far.
Anything on the budget?
I have one other thing. Going back to the disposable equipment and tools, with the six thousand, is, is that what you need for your, your day-to-day?
Pretty much, I just raise it just because of the equipment that we need, you know, for the housing tools, so we can upgrade the equipment. Like recently, it's been a while since it's been done, so I ordered to do hose testing. So the guy's been out there doing hose testing, and we've had several hoses fail. So I have ordered some hose, but they're still waiting for the next budget, so we can get some more raises.
Okay, so it's, it's not for the wildland?
It's not just basically for wildland, it's for other, it's just other equipment for our engines as well.
Anything on cemetery?
I have a couple of things. I, I wanted to revisit, oh, actually, that's not on the cemetery, but one of the things.
Yes, you are.
Thank you.
Unless you wanna.
Most you wanna talk to is about the cemetery.
Uh, the operation expenses was raised up to four thousand last year, or, it was, we budgeted twenty-five hundred, and only eleven hundred this year, and I'm just wondering why we increased that much.
Is there anybody here that can answer the question? No?
Is it maybe a potential projecting they're gonna use, do use a DOC to, more, would that fall under DOC?
You've got DOCs up there already.
Oh, okay.
No idea.
For nothing, yeah.
So they're not projecting now? I'd like to see that go back down to the twenty-five hundred.
Mr. Harrow, do you have any idea on that?
I don't have any idea right now.
I, I've got a question.
Yes.
Mr. Pocken, on the water, we've budgeted three thousand, but how are your talks for the there's on the water?
Um, the two-inch meter, hopefully, has already been removed.
I don't know if it's been removed, but it's, it's going to be.
So then could we reduce the water a bit?
You could. Two hundred times twelve.
Twenty-four hundred.
I wouldn't go that far. I think I'd go to fifteen hundred though.
Is there any way that, some of that that we're cutting out there, even like maybe five hundred of it, could be transferred to DOC for cleanup? Is that disagreeable, or? I mean, because right now, there's nothing, there's no DOC work.
Well, there hasn't been for four years.
Yeah, but unfortunately, other people are paying.
I heard there was some talk about a crew that would come in and do it for free. Was that part of the DOC?
We, we, yes. That's, either once or twice this year, they're, they told us they were gonna bring in what they call a community service crew, and I think they're gonna try and time that for near holidays where the cemetery is heavily visiting.
Veterans and memorial.
Veterans and memorial, they mostly, but I don't think we needed them on Memorial Day. It didn't look like we needed them on Memorial Day.
Well, the wind blew everything off.
Yeah, but the wind won't, won't blow those weeds that come in, at monsoon, but, but they, they have committed that to us, which doesn't mean that you wouldn't need them for other things on miscellaneous basis, but I'm guessing that the inmates that work out there for a day here and there probably are charged to parts of that. So it's not like we don't have them out there. They're probably being charged.
Yeah, it's just the concern is spraying into monsoon, because that's heavy with diamondback time, so.
Anybody who's ever witnessed the paybales that are produced after monsoon in that cemetery, it's a site to be held. Phone calls. Well, those go without saying, so.
John?
That's all I have. So what is going now?
We're reducing water to fifteen hundred.
And the operational expenses to twenty-five hundred?
Well. What do you all think?
It's been again, operational expenses to twenty-five hundred, so reducing by fifteen hundred?
I mean, it's been low in, in, in current year, but historically, it's been right up there close to four thousand.
Sure has.
I'd feel better leaving that one higher.
Yeah, we've been over, I mean, we've been over budgets, not this year, probably. But this is, remember, this is not now, this is March. Right. Ms. Hanson, next?
Um, on the building and maintenance, I know that we put thirty thousand dollars in there for the building that's on, is it on cemetery property, and what is it used for? The Sexton's house?
You're talking about the Sexton house? It's used for practically nothing at this point. There are, I, I wanna say four or five garage bays. They have been used for miscellaneous storage. I've been over there twice in the short period, and I've been back, and pretty much everything that I have been able to see in there has been inconsequential. There's one with a foreign lock on it that maybe we committed to allow storage space for some other community service to store stuff in, which shall, I, I don't know, because I'll have to check on that, but the part of the building that was used as an apartment slash office for the Sexton has not been used in years. I, I am told, I don't know this for a fact, but I, I know there's a beehive in there. I don't know if, what I was told the size of it is, was exaggerated or not, but it's a monster. The, in, in addition to that, we have, we have leaky roof and high incidence of, um, thank you, mold. The, um, the future of that building is highly doubt.
Is, is it a historical significance?
It has not been classified as an historic building, no. There is a difference.
At the risk of it.
Not, not all old buildings are.
It's all, yeah, I thought I had an antique, and they said it was just old.
Yeah, we, it's, it's been, it's been neglected for a very, very, very long time, like a couple of other buildings I mentioned.
Well, is, is this really something we should be throwing money at versus tearing down?
I, I don't wanna talk too far out of school, but I, somebody put a bug in my ear, that somebody might wanna put in a application to have a public auction to sell the building, so that, that has been received by the fire, by the clerk's office.
Um, I think he came and paid his fee.
And we, we have a, if somebody wants to buy city assets, they have to apply, it's three hundred dollar check.
Right, and then it goes to auction.
And then it goes to you.
It's posted and.
Oh, we know.
And then you go, you go through the process, so.
So we got the three hundred dollar check? I mean, they've done that far?
Yes.
Okay.
So is it then, do we wanna pull that thirty thousand dollars that we're putting there to, to restore it?
We've got, we still got the, the pump house, right?
Well.
And we were gonna, Joe was gonna look at the pump house and tell us.
Yeah, we need to, uh, we need, we definitely need to do some roof repairs on our pump house, that at a minimum. And I couldn't get to tell you what it would cost, because I don't know the degree of deterioration. I have, I've not been in the structure since I've been back.
But fifteen grand ought to do a roof?
Well, it, it ought to, unless it's something that our crews can do, but I'm guessing not.
So.
It's a little more, there's a little more route there than there was on stage issue two.
Would we, would we be okay then with pulling the thirty back out and leaving fifteen there and concentrating a man on the pump house?
Well.
Based on the fact that we are going to be getting a petition to sell the other property?
There are, there are other buildings, quite frankly, that are.
Please, let's worry.
Well, yeah, these, these were what we were talking about.
Yeah. So, um, I, I, I wouldn't wanna take too much out, Mr. Harrow. Maybe ten. Tops.
And we don't need to take any out if you did it. They would probably think it is.
I would say fine, that way it still leaves us a cushion, because it's not just that, that building.
It is, that collected buildings.
But I thought we were just talking about one specific building that we need.
Well, originally, we had, it had been brought up, and then Mr. Pocken mentioned that we had two that were in really bad shape.
Right, and those were the two, the Sexton?
Those were the two, and then to a lesser degree, we're having issues down at the airport.
Well, that's not, well, that's a different issue that we-
I'm just telling you what it is.
That thirty thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, but as soon as you take out a chunk of it, it's gonna go.
Well, let's try a different compromise. How about forty?
Take out forty thousand?
No.
Take out five. Leave it at forty.
Let's take out five, let's move on. Ms. Hanson, what's your next losing proposition?
It must be getting late.
All right. Public Works, yeah.
Mr. Harrow.
All right.
Remembering everyone, take it easy, Mr. Harrow, you have nothing to do. And then each one, he just keep, gonna be able to say, oh.
Well, the first one I had was telephone and fax. That was, we allocated fourteen hundred fifty dollars and we're three quarters of the way through, and we've only got five hundred and-
Well, last year we used a thousand.
So I, I would think that we could reduce that by four hundred and fifty.
Do we have additional personnel?
As for jet packs?
Um, if they are gonna be issued tablets, they're going to need their jet packs to-
Either way, we go with jet packs, or we use a cell phone, a cell phone with a hotspot feature, it's probably about the same.
Correct.
About the same cost. Because eventually, I would like to use, even when we talked about some management programs, where they can do everything where borders, right then and there, we have any type of-
Are you talking about the tablets?
Well, tablets, or even, or even, so smartphones.
Oh, okay, okay. All right. Okay, you got that one. On the operations manager that was vacant?
Yes.
Um, is that in the budget and is, is there, if you, I know what you mean, but have you looked at, is somebody occupying?
Have you filled it?
Yes, we did.
We filled it.
We have filled it, it's current.
Okay.
He started last week.
Okay.
You might in fact recognize it.
Mr. Gurney, Matt Gurney?
Really?
Yes.
Oh, congratulations.
Mr. Gurney, Matt Gurney?
Right. Um, non-capital of admin equipment? Admin equipment, furniture, two thousand there, only spent a hundred sixty-one, and even last year was seven hundred sixty-five. Yeah, seven hundred sixty-five.
Oh, were you just, for this year, remember, they were using someone else's desks and chairs and computers and everything else.
Okay, well, you go back to sixteen, seventeen, they didn't use anything.
There are times when that happens.
I suggested that we reduce it by a thousand. I agree.
I think we're probably all right, because we did get some. I hate, I hate calling new, but you know what I hate? Virtually everything.
Yeah. And then custodial?
Hold on, hold on.
Well, I was just gonna say, you anticipate some kind of large training that you're gonna be going to, because- I'm sorry, no, no, sorry.
Large training?
Well, I mean, in the past, the education training, they have seven forty-four, three thirty, and they budgeted for five thousand, and there's none that-
This is for the Public Works Administration, so there are two conferences here that are built. Arizona Public Works or American Public Works Association, Arizona Chapter, that's a big conference. And then there's another one, it's Arizona Roads and Streets. They're both in Tucson. They're not, not really super expensive, but those are probably some pretty important ones to attend.
Right, but are you gonna need five thousand dollars?
But not the whole five thousand. Well, will you take three?
How about twenty-five hundred, cut it in the break now?
Either way, whatever, whatever we get for that, for that amount, we'll do what we can with it.
We don't want to short you, but I mean, for, I mean, what would be a projection? With twenty-five thousand?
Yeah, but just, and on the same thing, I see only three hundred dollars in business travel.
Yeah.
You know, two round trips, two thousand, one three hundred dollars. So probably want to, probably want to put another five hundred dollars in there.
So just took two crazy ones away from it.
Yeah.
So I put that one up to a thousand. It's still in that game, but you're gonna run out of, you know, at the current mileage rate, two round trips and two seconds.
Well, yeah. If you go to the game, you're in the hole.
So we're adding how much?
We're gonna go to one thousand from three hundred.
Oh, is that, is that a hundred?
Seven hundred, I'm sorry. It is getting money.
Just at eight hundred. And custodial, custodial supplies, you have three thousand, and the last two years, you have six hundred forty-four and seven seventy-nine. Now, I, I know at one time, Public Works was buying all the custodial equipment or stuff for everybody, but that's not the way we're doing it anymore, is that correct?
They buy it and then we allocate it out to the different departments, so Public Works itself doesn't use that much.
Right, because Public Works does purchase all of it, and we distribute it to the rest of the city.
But, but, which I see custodial in other places, so.
Yeah, it's purchased here, but then we do a journal entry to allocate it out to the other departments, so it ends up reducing whatever that expense was by whatever we allocated it at.
So you actually spend three thousand dollars for it, because it shows six forty?
I mean, we might spend three thousand, but then we'll take, you know, most of that and distribute it.
So those are two numbers, or the after the fact, after it's been bought back, so it's biggest cut, okay.
So, so-
So what they actually use in fiscal activity plus six hundred and forty?
Correct.
But the other-
So, so, the, we, if we cut it down to a thousand dollars-
That would be Public Works portion of the custodial?
Then that would be, where all we're looking at is, is Public Works, it could be less, but if we break- If we, if we break it down to a grand, then, then it would still give you way more than that.
Okay.
So we're reducing two thousand or a thousand?
No, reducing it to two thousand, two plus thousand.
Two, two one thousand, yeah. Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, that's it?
So the gasoline, then, the gasoline doesn't include travel, like, when they go, that's all based on? Because we have five hundred for gas, I don't know if we, though we managed to put on some-
That's for the trucks.
Operations manager salary out to the other departments, that's only, I would say about forty-seven.
Oh, okay, where did you, go ahead with the other.
I see you're reading it.
Normally, the operations manager, their salary is allocated out to streets and sanitation and wastewater, and in this budget, for some reason, it wasn't allocated. If we allocate it out, and I didn't know what to base it on, I kind of based it on the number of employees in those departments, which would be allocating basically seventy percent of their salary, forty percent to sanitation, fifteen percent to streets, and fifteen percent to wastewater. That would reduce the Public Works budget by about forty-seven thousand. And, and I think streets and wastewater wouldn't have any issue covering that, but it is kind of a large hit to sanitation. So I don't know if we'd want to play with that allocation in all some, or.
Oh, wait, the percentage is good?
Um, fifteen percent to the streets, fifteen percent to wastewater, and forty percent to sanitation. And that was, like I said, based on the number of employees in those departments.
Would have been bumped it to twenty, twenty-three? That'd be easier to manage?
See, uh, like-
Is there a cushion in the other two part?
Yeah, there is a cushion.
So twenty, twenty-three probably would fit. Why don't, why don't we, why don't we look at twenty, twenty-three, like Ms. Giacometto suggested, and as long as there's a cushion right now, then it changes by. Anything else?
So then that's gonna take-
That's gonna lower the public, that's gonna lower the general fund forty-seven thousand dollars.
Right. Oh, cool.
So it's not a personnel cost, so the one fifty-three, six eighty-four, you can subtract thirty-seven K.
Okay.
Leaving out the rest. Okay, Ms. Backland, we have eight more of those.
Okay, so far, you win in the amount.
Anything else from Mr. Harrow on that particular department? Public Works Garage. Ms. Hanson, if you have any?
Garage.
Depends on part of the country, it's called garage.
Internet access, is that the same thing with smartphones or whatever?
So you don't even have one?
They don't even have, they don't have internet.
Well, how come we allocated one point two?
They, they do need, needed access, but they don't have it right now.
Right, there's an issue with security and having internet at the garage, but we're gonna work on it.
Yeah.
Okay, so is that what the one, the twelve hundred dollars is for?
Yeah, right, it's definitely a need, it's just, it has, it's not a place that's very secure. We have to do something to make sure, so not anybody can access it except the-
They can't lock the office?
Have you been there?
Yeah, they've had a little lock.
We can, we can lock it, they're gonna, we're gonna put a computer in one of the offices, and they have to lock it, we have to make sure that the computer is faced a certain direction, so that they can't, it's-
I got it, I got it.
It's all issues with DOC.
First Amendment audit.
Contract services?
Contract services?
Yes.
You're a little low this year, that's why.
It's sixty-five dollars, right?
Wow.
Coming up from thirteen.
Of course, it's a big building.
All water, they get, they get, they only get-
They do get water, they get water delivered there.
Yeah.
They get, they have ice delivered there also.
That's your, that's your, water, that's, that's your. Uh, the furniture non-caps is, that's just a figure kind of put in there, are we really looking at something? We've got so much furniture that's been donated to us, that's, I think we're storing. And I'm wondering, if you have something in mind, I know you need to do this.
I don't have anything in mind, they, they happen to say they needed something, and no one's even said anything about that. I've had plenty of meetings with the staff and asking, what do you need, and no one said anything about needing furniture.
Do you think we can cut that out?
I think we can.
We think we can, so let's cut that out.
No, we can't.
Non-cap.
Yeah.
Again, are you looking at a large building repair down there also?
In the garage, um, no, I don't, I haven't heard anything about a large repair.
Because there's five thousand dollars, and there hasn't been anything spent on the repair, that's what I'm just saying.
In three years, there's been three hundred eighty dollars spent.
In three years?
Well, we're about due then.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is there anything that they know of substantial?
They, they, again, I haven't heard anything almost there.
So we could maybe cut it to a thousand, maybe?
The only thing I could think of that might need a repair is if their air conditioner or something in there, it's been a while, but they won't say anything about it, so.
I would recommend cutting it in half.
Twenty-five?
Twenty-five hundred.
And what about vehicle parts and labor? I, back in sixteen, seventeen, it fourteen hundred, uh, fourteen, forty-four hundred, a little bit over that was spent, but the last two years, even in seventeen, eighteen, it was only, it was less than two thousand. So can we cut that back a little bit?
With vehicle parts and labor.
Yeah. It's about seven from the bottom.
Yeah, we're saving it there.
That's a, that's a bewildering number, the current numbers.
That's a-
I would, I'm not sure I want to trust that one. But, because I'm also, and I never, I never understood why we separated the two, but fluids and lubricants are like parts to me, but they kind of, they kind of go together.
Yeah, and that one's high too.
Yeah, if you jump back up, there's twenty-five hundred, and if you look, they've never spent more over five, yeah, five, twenty.
I think you'd be more than covered if you did ten thousand dollars between the two.
Ten thousand. Because we're only seventy-five hundred between these two.
That would, that would, that would reduce your budget four thousand dollars.
Oh, I'm missing what you're saying there.
I'm saying between vehicle parts and fluids and lubricants.
Oh, okay, we were, we were talking about two different-
Yeah, we were talking about equipment repair maintenance also for the twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, let's, let's get this, let's get the one that Mr. Pocken's talking about first.
So the fluids and the-
I'd leave vehicle parts at five thousand.
Right.
And, and put lubricants at five thousand.
So that's four thousand difference, right?
That's four thousand dollars difference, and if we end up having to borrow from one to do the other, we can always make a entry at the end of the year. If we need it.
Then let's jump back up to equipment, repair, and maintenance.
I'm sorry.
The twenty-five hundred?
Um, because that seems to be, unless there's something on the horizon that we don't know about, that's another big jump.
Yeah, that would be for things like the lifts.
Yeah.
Um, tire busters.
Tire balancers, spin balancers.
Tire balancers, those kind of things.
Wow, those are big ticket items.
Yeah, the problem is, is that a lot of times it's zero, but when one brings it's-
You're right, that's what I'm saying, that's the thing, that's the base, when you need it, you need it, so.
Well, that's also one thing that's been pushed to purchase for a long time, is the actual spin balancer for the launch, because right now, there isn't one, and I'll have to go to Firestone for all the tires we send. That's what has been talked about for a long time, just want to throw that out there for the division. Hey, that is true, it's one thing that, it's rushed after the passport.
I'm sorry.
And capital, cap, capital expenditures, that's eight thousand, what is that?
What'd you buy it for, eight grand?
I thought that was where the tire-
That's, that's correct.
Yeah, if you're gonna buy a machine, yeah.
That would be the capital.
Oh, okay.
So the equipment repair would be, so if you bought it and drove it down, that's right?
That's right.
Right, so, one of those hydraulic lifts, I'm sure they can't be fixed for less than a thousand dollars to walk in the door.
I charge a lot more than that, because I don't know how to fix it.
Well, then you base the money on if you hire somebody who's qualified.
Okay, so I, I, I'm lost here somewhere. What did we reduce? Was it on the fluids?
Fluids, other fluids and lubricant, from nine thousand down to five thousand.
Okay, and we didn't do building repair against to twenty-five, right? Did you get that out? Um, yeah, twenty-five on the building.
Building repair.
So, and we're leaving vehicle parts and labor? Or did we reduce?
That's the left alone.
Okay. And we're leaving capital expenditures?
Right.
Okay. Better inspector, this, Mr. Pocken would be- Billy Inspector, this, uh, Mr. Pocken would be potentially what we discussed first with the fire inspector saying too.
Okay, so, because I wasn't here for the original discussion, you're talking about hiring a part-time person?
Nineteen hours.
So, is that in lieu of, or instead of, um, we have fire inspectors who have it also?
It would be in addition, it would be in addition to as civilian, so there's no P S B R S. In line with Phoenix Mason Tempe, who signed multiple other jurisdictions.
Okay, and since we.
And their, their primary job, their primary job would be commercial inspections of buildings and the initial inspection of commercial buildings for fee, and that's what we'll be discussing is that fee.
Okay, now that fee's already in here, is that correct? Didn't I see that in revenues?
Well, that was a.
Twenty six thousand?
Yeah, and that's, that's, under what we were even suggesting, that's, that's two hundred and sixty inspections.
Well, that's a lot of inspections for one year.
And these are just for commercial inspections?
Commercial inspections.
Okay, so it, that's why I asked, it's just commercial, okay, so then what's an inspector, I mean, it's not gonna be inspected every year?
Absolutely, it's, that's, that, we're, we are required by fire codes to inspect every commercial structure once a year. And we don't do it, and quite a long thing, many cities don't do that, but that's where, if there's a fire there and somebody gets injured, that's where the city is liable because they weren't doing their job, and that's what I've been preaching, as to why we need this.
Well, I don't think the city should be liable for somebody being hurt and they're privately managing.
The courts make that decision, not us, and believe me, they do make that decision.
So when you say commercial, um, is that like just the businesses?
Hand care of.
Right, it's not like a, a, or like somebody's, uh, would it be the Airbnbs? And the rent, what about a, a long-term rental, would that be it, when it has to be inspected, or is it different?
Not a long-term.
Not, okay, that's what I was trying to clarify.
No, not a long-term.
Okay.
But business.
Right.
Yeah, long-term rentals are, they should don't.
That's a different type of, that's why I was just curious, so, so then there's potential.
Generally, with few exceptions, anything is not a residential.
Correct.
With few exceptions. I, I, the only question I had here was the professional fees. I, I guess, what, what, what that amount in a building inspector, so? Do we know?
Yeah, I think in the past it was if we needed to use the county to do inspections, while Joe was on vacation, but with the way it is now, it's supposed to be.
That wouldn't eliminate it completely, but I think you can drop it down to, uh, six thousand.
Yeah, cause I think that's why we didn't spend any money last year.
Yeah.
It's because of our agreement with the county.
But you never know.
You're right.
Real quick.
Yeah.
An engineer, father, retain the loan.
So we could agree to drop it to a grand, we're taking twenty five hundred off, bringing it to a thousand. That's all I have. Parks? Ms. Hanson?
Okay, operational expenses, um, we've only spent five thousand this year. Uh, we had opted, because of the previous two years, it's been eighteen thousand, doubled to twenty thousand. So I'm not sure what has happened this year that it's been so low. But can we drop that back down to, or back, or to eighteen thousand, or you're fifteen?
What would? I'm trying to think of all the operational expenses that parks had.
Yeah, like, well.
Concerning the better plan, whatever, just operational expenses, never seen, it would just.
I think, uh.
Please.
I mean, there was the Sonora Fest came on, uh, some of that.
Okay, so we travel that there now.
So it's like popular event?
Well, uh, but we overheaded sixteen, sixteen and seventeen and seventeen, eighteen.
And there was also different management plans, so there was things like, you know, um, festival of lights and, and things that were, things were purchased that maybe.
Oh, okay.
Rec- recycling, um, uh, personnel were put in, yeah.
Well, this sounds like one where you could decide.
I, I'm gonna suggest we drop to five thousand dollars. Okay.
Long as it doesn't cover. Long as it doesn't cover court lines.
Oh.
Oh, that should be under.
Under court parties. Well, that's not, that makes sense.
You don't wanna be short on those.
So, so we can drop by fifteen thousand dollars.
Was there anything, I'm thinking about stair climb.
Paying for.
Paying for anything?
Yeah.
Yep.
Do you speak that?
I know.
Building repair and maintenance, uh, and then also building repair and vandalism, it's, it's, uh, four thousand at each one, and we can't pay more than twenty, you know, seven hundred dollars in that, so it's one year.
Yeah, probably, here's what I would suggest, is just eliminate the line item for vandalism, because they're the same line item.
I will tell you that we do have some, some doors that need to be repaired and total metal doors are not, they're not very inexpensive, they can get, they can get pretty pricey. So we could, and then the, and the hardware for those, you know, commercial.
How, how about we, we take building repair and maintenance and bump it to five, and then take the, the three, the remaining three out?
And the little one?
Yeah, maybe, yeah, cause you'd be dropping.
If you buy it to one, yeah. And then that will just, so it'll just be building, repair and maintenance, just one line item, item instead of two.
Correct.
Well, it'll take a few years to run it out, but, yeah.
And gasoline.
And that saves three thousand.
Uh, this bit was bumped up to seventy five, um. Yeah, we went over in one year.
Yeah, I wish I could tell you what fiscal eighteen.
But I was, I was just thinking of taking a thousand out of that, so just popping it down to six, five.
Six thousand five hundred.
No, sixty five cents.
Sixty five cents.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, uh, six, sixty five hundred, yeah.
Yeah, you notice there's no decimal points on any of these numbers, Charles.
Oh, I put decimal points and put a K. That's, that's the reason I'm getting confused.
She's got her budget at a hundred and three thousand dollars, so.
That's right. Are you? And, yeah, that's all I have.
That's it?
I have two problems. Um, I would like to go back up to red programs and special events, um, seventy five hundred dollars, what special events and red programs do we have? That you're gonna jump at that much when we spent forty four? I mean, we have festival of lights, what else have we got?
We had the Fourth of July, and they did the, the Wonder Slides and.
So.
And that's about five thousand.
Right, but, I mean, we're, we're cutting all this other.
There, there is, um, one, um, member of, of the, um, park staff, um, they were a part-time employee, um, previously, they moved to full-time. Their pay never was adjusted, um, there is a, in the swimming pool, um, budget, there is a pool manager position budgeted. We don't use, we don't fill that one because the other parks, um, staff member is a manager of certifications. What I, what I was proposing under it was taking that money and being able to adjust this staff member's, um, salary.
Is that a wash?
It's a wash.
So in fact, in fact, we'd be saving, we'd be saving like.
We're saving money, let's do it, but I, I'm still questioning the.
Please, please.
The, um, efficiency, I guess, um, of spending that much money on red programs and special events, I mean, we're cutting everything else. And I, you know, I, again, it's for the, you know, the kids and everything, but it, it just seems like an awful lot, I mean, I was at the, the, I worked up at the, um, festival of lights and I mean, some of the stuff, it just seemed all top prize wise, I mean.
Well, a lot of, some of that's still, I agree with that. Uh, but.
We also have the Fourth of July.
I get the, yeah.
Well, exactly, I think that's the whole point.
Right.
We used to do candy stockings.
Yeah, and it's like Amazon games, 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 I mean, there were a lot of that, what's paid for, this other.
So can we, uh, uh, drop that down to five thousand dollars?
At least, I would think. I, I think you can, uh, still be creative and still manage it.
What you suggested, Ms. Jacobino?
No, I'm.
Seventy five hundred down to?
Five, you said five thousand.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I wasn't disagreeing with you, I was just mumbled. Um, the other one, landscaping material, um, it's in here for six thousand, to date, we've spent twenty seven hundred. Um, do we really need six thousand, and we could be cut that down to four?
I would say, oh, we do, we have to be creative with, with our, our landscaping, so, and I just think getting more attention.
Well, okay, no, that's what I'm just asking.
Yeah, I think it's best left alone at this point.
Yeah, and we've spent more than since then.
Okay, that's, that was my question, that was my question, okay.
Last couple of months because of things booming and so forth.
That was just a question.
Booming, yeah.
Okay.
That's all, yeah, I think we should increase water.
Why, why?
I was, I'm sorry, no, no.
Why such a big jump in gasoline?
Oh, probably because of the trimming.
Well, we took thousand on that.
Yeah, we cut it a thousand.
Okay, well, I, I, there was some cross talks on this part of that, so we took a thousand on, yeah, so we left it at sixty five, okay, thank you, sorry. I, I apologize for that.
But there's actually, it seems like there's a lot more, I see a lot more cutting, trimming, you know, actual gasoline-using activities lately, I mean, so I wasn't really, I wasn't really shocked by that.
You're right.
So good. Moving along to the pool?
We're not gonna do the library.
Well, well, I thought the pool came.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry, I'm backwards.
I'm just following a word.
I couldn't scale that, I'm sorry.
I don't know, I, I hate to tell somebody, but there's only one person on the staff here.
I'm thirteen. That's another person, um, do you have any comments, Phil?
No, I didn't have anything on the pool.
Okay, I, my big issue is electric and water, there's no reason why there should be that much, your pool shouldn't be being run, um, in the way, in the winter, it should be drained down below the drains and that all should be cut down. I mean, every, every pool except Tucson, and, um, I mean, we did it when Steve was here in the past, and the electric bill, at most, at most should be about thirty five hundred dollars, or if you could look back, yeah, four thousand, whatever we had electric, and that's just outrageous, they're leaving that pool running all year round, and there's no reason for that.
So you're, you're saying we drain the pool?
No, 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 not completely, not completely, down below, winterize, down below the drains, because if you drain it completely, you're gonna crack it, it's the way the trolley. No, I didn't, no, down below the drains and drain all your solar panels out, everything gets drained back, and you put the covers on it, and, um, there, there used to be all the floaters that they filled with chlorine, and they threw them under, you know, for the bug control, and you shut everything down. And the only time they used electricity was for the, what is that bicycle thing you guys do? You know, you like, you let that bicycle group come in and they use the showers.
I, I did hear that.
Yeah, but then you, you drain all your toilets back and put antifreeze in the toilets, you know, so they don't break, and, I mean, your water, your water shouldn't, that's crazy, you know, I know, just, that's just me.
Just out of my own sense of curiosity, when did that change and what was the rationale?
It changed two years ago, I think, or three years ago, and I don't know, I don't think it was, I, I think it was a command decision by somebody, the public works person rather than input from anybody else.
Someone who no longer is a player.
I, I, yeah, you can see that the actual.
Because he is now.
Right, right, yeah, I do.
Well, that's why I'm just sitting back listening to this, to.
I do have another question though, why this isn't, um, why we haven't made this into a enterprise fund? Um, I was talking to my boss today in Douglas, and she told me that they're an enterprise fund, and that would really give you a, a very good way of tracking exactly how much you're gonna be connected, what, what did you bring in revenue wise? I mean, like the Queen Wine Tour is enterprise, right? Yeah.
The pool doesn't, um, make enough revenue to cover its expenses, I mean, they.
So you have to cover your expenses to be an enterprise fund?
Yeah, and most of it's covered by taxes, you know, on a, you know, general public.
Taxes.
And money raised by friends of the pool. Right, yeah, I, I get that, but I was just. But I, I really think that electric and water needs to be established and slashed.
Well.
Two?
Your water at least should be cut now, your, um, because I mean, look back on what they've used, you know, fifty six, and I know right now it's, it's at forty three and we're.
Well, fifty six was budgeted for, for this year, um.
But look back, look back at the actual on two thousand sixteen and seventeen.
I know, the only one that jumps out is the one on seventeen, eighteen, so why don't, why don't we push it back to fifty six hundred, which was what it was for last year?
Okay, that, that's fine, that's.
It was seventeen, eighteen is when the pool, the repairs went on and all that stuff, so it was lots and lots of water.
Yeah, yeah. Right, but the electric.
Let's go six thousand, what do you say?
So we're reducing by four thousand?
That's correct.
And, um.
Electric now, if, you know, I'm.
Some of those numbers are.
I'm a little shocked.
But that's cause it's been run, they don't shut it off, and, um, if you shut your, if you shut your pool down in the, the seven months or eight, wait, eleven, nine months, you're not open for a general public, I mean, you think about that.
Well, I'll tell you what, uh, just because, um, I'm unsure of a couple, there's a couple of variables here, number one is rates, number two is, uh, age and efficiency of the equipment that we have, and I don't know if or when it's been last replaced. I, I would be reluctant to go too much down below ten thousand this year, and then once you close the pool over later, maybe you can find.
Yeah, I would.
Yeah, once we get, uh, getting back into.
Right, it's like, yeah.
I agree with that.
Cause, you know, we got more control over water than we do over that.
Yeah, the only time the water ever really cranked out was that time that, that valve on the wall, it can, it was a control flow valve went out, and we had like a million gallons of water used in a month. We were like, oh, I could hear this weird noise, and that felt the other time we ran it.
Okay, we are up to the library?
I have, for contract services, we have eighty five hundreds. I would suggest that we back that off to six thousand, now I don't know if that, what, what is, oh, wait, but, cause contract services might be for the odd spots.
That is exactly what it's.
Where the.
Because they added additional ones this year, it's going to be an increase.
Remember last year, we, we didn't have an annex.
Exact, yeah, I thought, I was thinking about the, the, the annex.
Quite, quite honestly, I left the library totally alone because of the annex, and I thought there were too many unknowns.
The only, um, other one. Was, um, well, actually, there were two of them. The periodicals, maybe just, um, taking five hundred from that. The building and repair, we've had ten thousand in there. If we just drop that down to seventy-five, because they haven't used more than, um, six thousand there.
I know that, but that's an over one hundred year old building and things happen. I'd be afraid too, because, you know.
Sure.
One year that's not on here, we had to replace all the coolers.
So we should leave it out there so we don't have to use it?
That would be my premise. That would be my premise, yes.
No, I, I understand the logic. Yeah, and, and I, I'm with, I'm with you as far as the library's concerned. I hate to take anything from the, because this has become a hub for the city. It, it's a community center. It's, it's just a meeting place, so.
I, I have a question about the internet. You know, you guys just said that that jumped up because of the hub, the contractual. But why is then the internet access twenty-three hundred right now? Is that the hub speeding up the bat? So why?
The internet access is just the internet access to the building itself.
Okay, because it was budgeted only seven hundred and twenty dollars and we've already spent twenty-three oh three?
Um, I think they, there was a grant for the, the wifi, um, and they actually spent more than what the grant was. So we had to move some of that expense into the regular library budget, so that, that's what happens.
And then postage? We spent three hundred and fifteen dollars on postage and we're budgeting fifteen hundred of the, of the mail. Why would the postage be so high? What's been high in the past?
We may need to have a discussion with library personnel because we all know that methods of communication are changing.
Right.
So we'll have that, uh, discussion with him at the staff ranking on Wednesday.
So are we leaving postage or are we?
I would prefer that we left for now, if you, if you don't mind, since it's a relatively small amount. If we, if we discover that it can't be reduced, we just go ahead and take care of it.
Okay, and periodicals was being reduced by five hundred? Is that correct? Yeah, is that what you said?
That's what I would suggest.
Well, periodicals now, those are subscription, annual subscriptions generally. So I don't know if this eight hundred and twenty dollars reflects, you know, twenty out of a hundred subscription payments or fifty out of a hundred subscription. We'll have to ask him that too. And if we can reduce that one to.
Okay. Okay, so it's.
I was just.
I would leave it, uh, at the current value. We'll reduce it for you if we discover. Because I know, you know, uh, I know some libraries are dropping periodicals because they're easier access by the internet, which you were sometimes. So we'll, uh, we'll, we'll talk to him at the staff meeting on Wednesday, there's two ideas.
I didn't have anything on the senior center.
Someone right here.
Well, I was still, I have one question I was gonna.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, so is that position that was grant filled out at the, um, annex, is that, is it gonna continue to be grant or is now are we picking up the dime?
We picked, we picked it up. On senior center for the, uh, building repair. In the last four years, we've used a hundred and sixty-three dollars.
Well, that's not true.
Well, that's what it says.
I know, I can guarantee you that. I have no idea how that was done, but that's not true. I was, uh, I was there when a lot of roof. Uh, there was major water damage in the Seagull area because of leaking roof and, uh, we had roof repairs and so forth. And I have no idea where.
I guess probably the building has been splurged at seventy-four.
Because, so I'm just letting you know that.
Sounds like there might have been insurance there too.
I don't know, to be honest with you.
To me, that Seagull area is still right there.
Well.
I was there when we cut the roof.
Well, this was, uh, you know, the addition on the north side where the two roofs are. Had a problem since day one.
Is there any reason, um, to foresee that the electricity's gonna jump that much? Um, because in the past, we've kept it a little under six thousand and we've used four thousand eighty-seven to date, but we're budgeted for sixty-five. Is there a reason why we've budgeted that much higher?
I think they just were trying to be safe. I, I, that's my, that's my take.
You're gonna end up, you're gonna end up to your, um, fifty-five hundred.
Let's see. Yeah, you know, we're, we're four, four thou, four thousand in March, so.
If anything.
Got three more months, that's. Okay?
So we leave the five thousand in there?
Yeah.
I would feel that.
Contingency, bad. We've raised it to a hundred?
Right.
Remember, that's money that we'll never have to use.
Well, that's one of those numbers that you tick off in your head when you look at how much.
Exactly.
We got in aggregate and you say, well, you know. But we'd be, it's still up there, it's still up, it's not there.
Absolutely. Visitor center? Doug? Can, not really putting you on the spot, but putting you on the spot. What, yeah, I know, what, what, help us with, because of what was said and so forth.
Yeah.
Help us with the rationale about the sixteen thousand.
Couple of things are happening. Uh, the revenues versus expenses disclosed, something like that. But also, when I first started, when I started with the mine tour, uh, the sixteen thousand dollars, I spent a lot of advertising, if you're familiar. And the last few years, other than being on their website, that's pretty much what I've gotten, what we've gotten from it. I do my own advertising, spend fifty-five thousand, sixty thousand dollars a year on it, and that's the rationale. I just. Haven't seen a lot coming out.
You're not getting the bank for the buck.
That's correct.
You know, you, you know, I mean, I hate to bring this up about one more time, but, um, you know. Looks like we lost about fifty thousand dollars of bed tax money and you can either choose to backfill from someplace else or take your lumps and put it back on the mountain.
Well, you'll go, you'll go on the ballot when we can, but.
Believe me, when I got back from vacation, the first call I got was from somebody saying, we heard uptown that you don't care about tourism. And you don't think we need to have tourism. That's what I heard running out. And of course, everybody, everybody, every reasonable person knows that's entirely true. But it's just like my argument earlier this evening about in the general fund, about lease officers, if you can't afford it, don't spend money. And I don't know what else to do. The only option you have is to backfill it for the general fund. Or you can, you can, you can tell us to take it out of the Queen Mine Tour. I don't know if that's equitable either way.
Well, I, 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 my personal opinion is that, um, if we're not, if Queen Mine Tour is not getting the bank for the buck as a enterprise fund. Then they shouldn't be paying somebody else to, to, or subsidizing, uh, something else, so.
I get it, but then there is an argument out there, and I know you've heard it, um, that the general fund benefits from tourism.
Well, it's a little more difficult to defend if it doesn't. I mean.
Why?
Tourists, tourists buy stuff because of the sales tax, but, so, I mean, that is a defendable position. But, um, I don't think that, um, the Queen Mines were paying sixteen thousand dollars for something that they don't believe they're, you know. I think it does right. I think that, as far as I know, the only thing that the, uh, visitor center is doing is public is almost free. You know, the, uh, the media, uh, so, anyway, that's what I'm, uh, I say that we, my opinion is that we keep, uh, the sixteen thousand dollars out. But that we attempt to backfill it some other way. But that's my opinion. We've got, we've got other, other people here.
Okay, so on the visitor's center.
Uh-huh.
I don't have, I guess I don't have my, here with me, um. Going back to it, um. I mean, I know we've talked about the manager and the director and all of that, but if we don't have the money for the director. I think the manager position is.
Well. Well, technically, we don't have the money for that here.
What, what is in front of you tonight balances, okay? Mr. Miller's argument is that we need more money placed in the budget for advertising.
Right.
That was his request.
Great. The manager is in here and it balances.
And what we've done.
Yeah, that was for the overnight destination, one.
Yeah, what we've done is, uh, we have, um, estimated the cost of. The, um, director at the midpoint, okay? Because we really don't know until we hire somebody where we're at. So midpoint's the safest place to be. Don't generally hire a midpoint unless it's an exceptional hire, in most cases. So, you know, we're balanced the way it sits right now. Uh, the question, the question that Mr. Miller raised was, can we put more money in advertising? And he is right, uh, you know, we did have, in seventeen, we had fifty-five thousand, in eighteen, we had forty-six thousand. It's been considerably less, uh, in the last couple of years, even with the one percent bed tax that has expired. And I don't know the reason for that, quite honestly. It could be because of the costs have gone up. You know, um, the only person we have on staff right now, uh, that could lend any insight to that would be Alba. Uh, because she was, um, he was, she was around for all of the, what, the last three years, something like that. Uh, so if there's been any changes, and of course, we could always, um, ask Ms. Lurie too, but the issues were that. Uh, or what, what caused that budget to be as it, as you see it. The only number, um, that neither one of those two is responsible for is the one that's in the proposed budget. So, were we doing something different in more recent years to get the same bag? I don't know the answer to that question. So.
Well, what, what, what we're doing right now is providing the director position, I guess they're calling it.
I believe it's director now, I guess.
Yeah, that, 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 they were planning for, but the suggestion is not adding backfill money. In lieu of the Queen Mine Tours money.
Okay, so then on the part-time, so I know when we initially talked about this, we were talking about if we went the director position. Um, even midway or whatever, that, that's kind of what the part-time position is, I mean. Can we cut that part-time position?
Um. Unless there's been a radical change in the operation, um, you know. My understanding is that director position is to be a tourism director.
Right.
Okay? Which by definition lessens the amount of those resources that are dedicated to running the visitor's center. We really need a part-time person, have intended to have one in the past, plus volunteers that basically man the visitor's center. Excuse me, staff the visitor's center, um, and help visitors get to destinations or get hotels booked and that sort of thing. If you recall, uh, Doug Hacking worked there for a good number of years, um, Nancy Jacobson worked there for a good number of years. That's what that position is. And if, if your tourism director's gonna be spending more time doing things other than. Work in the visitor's center, then that person's not gonna be there, then basically we have no staff in a visitor's center.
Okay, um, so then question, isn't this part-time salary for the position at the mining museum? Or is it the one, the actual mine?
It is.
Except the mining museum.
Well, the, the contract services line is for the mining museum employee and the other part, there is a part-time person that works at the visitor's center.
That's right, right. And the contract is, is, yeah, the contract is with the mining museum.
The thirteen thousand?
Yeah, so you got thirteen thousand, yeah.
Therefore, and then you have a part-time person at the visitor's center.
Okay, so do we still, should we still be doing that part-time at the mining museum?
Well, there.
Because I know that initially, when that had first come about, it was like for a year, and then I thought they were going to work on that.
Who, they, the mining museum?
Right.
No, it was simply that, uh, it was a, a basically a fifty-fifty split. And that, that person is seeing a, a huge amount of people that are coming into the visitor's center annex and picking up the materials. Hotel rooms are being, uh, um, provided, not provided, but, you know, the, the reservations are being made, all of that sort of stuff. Right there in the downtown area that are picking up people that aren't going to the mine.
Well, okay, so is that a position that we can use up at the, our actual visitors?
Only for those, well, only for those people that go to the mine. I mean, there's a lot of people that aren't, that aren't walking up to the mine or driving up to the mine that are downtown and see visitor's center. And they find out, oh, I can eat here, I can spend a night here, I can do these things. So that position, I think, is a very important position.
They, every year that they have increased the number of people that they see that, um, that come into that, that area. Or into the visiting, the visitor's office, information office, uh, because it's more centralized. And they have all kinds of, of pamphlets for the area, not, and the only reason that they were separated. Or, and not everyone was moved is because you had to have the state, one that was required to have this, this state information. My understanding is you're no longer required to have that. I don't know if that's true.
Sorry, what was the question?
The state information, that you had to have that in your, your visitor center?
If you want to be a recognized visitor's center, the answer is yes, you do.
I had heard that that had changed. I don't know if that's true or not.
No, new rules came out, uh, right after the first of the year done.
That's right.
And they're actually more stringent than they were.
They were before, okay.
Yeah, the, uh, the, the, I'm not sure what you call it, but the visitor's center had the museum.
Of information.
Would not qualify under.
Right, that's right, because they don't have the state.
Wouldn't qualify under the old criteria either.
Right, because they, they offer only visitor's meter.
And that was the reason we have, you still have the two little stations also.
And I'll just throw it out there because I'm being a bad boy tonight. I question whether or not we can afford to do that too. I question whether or not we can afford to do that too. That's a decision you all have to make. Goes back to, you don't have the money anymore. What do you do?
Well, I think that's, that's my question.
And, and I'm not trying to gore anyone's ox here, I'm just saying, when you come to grips with reality and you don't have the money, and we, we've all felt that in our own personal lives, I don't consider this any different, but I realize that some things are unpopular, but instead of before, I'd say it again.
Well, then, when we can put that one percent back on the ballot, I mean, there's no guarantee it will pass, but should it, I think then we could look at that position again, I mean, but. Why not cut, cut the position that's up at the, at the, the mine tour? Why cut the one that is down in, in the museum?
Well, I agree with that.
Mr. Graham had a comment.
You're going to cut the position, it should be the one for mine tours. The majority of people that actually visit, uh, making that order for the visitor's center is down top. Uh, people walk by there every day and, and, and it's pretty well-tended, the visitor's center. Uh, the idea of, of visitor's center being at the mine tour is, you know, it's all well and good, there's a very, I, I doubt very many people walk up there looking for a visitor's center. Uh, the visitor's center should be at the museum.
Say those numbers are larger than you think, Mr. Higgins. Let's, let's go back in time to the day when the visitor's center was in rights back down in the middle of Convention Center.
R.B. Cleveland.
In rights back down in the middle of Convention Center.
Yeah.
Okay? We got thrown out.
Well, the Convention Center at one time, either visitor's center at one time used to be on Subway Street.
Well, I understand that, but my recollection is it was right where it should be.
In the middle of Convention Center.
That's right.
That's a great place.
And we got thrown out.
Yeah.
And it, and it wasn't, and it wasn't a long notice, it was get out of here at the end of the month. And we had to physically move all that stuff with just a couple of days' notice up to the mine tour because there was nowhere else.
Yeah.
And so I'd say we've made a pretty good success of that venue, and people do know where it is.
Well, I don't, I don't know. You know, I, I, I don't know, I, uh, I, I suppose that, you know, that you track how many visitors, uh, come to the visitor's center at the mine tour, you have that number, don't you?
I don't remove those.
And also, uh, there's probably, somebody has the number of how many visitors, uh, I'm sure.
I've got those.
You have that number?
Yes.
Oh, it should be easy.
But, I mean.
It should be easy enough to see.
Ideally, if we were trying to get a budget together tonight, a launch goal would be to take a look at the launcher to put the ideal spot, find the ideal location and get it over period of time.
And because of that, I'm very hesitant to cut any position. Because I don't think that it's informed, I don't think it's a truly informed position based on that. So, that's my, that's my take.
Okay. Mr. Graham wanted to say something when it came up about the part-time position at the mine tour.
It's the rules, the, you know, the new AOT rules, they require.
Yeah.
It's, the new AOT rules require to be manned seven days a week, the official visitor's center. Uh, they're quite, the rules are quite rough, uniforms, all that kind of stuff. So, that, that's why if you take part-time out of there, we don't even need the requirements now. Um, you know, the bus parking, the number of parking places that are required, it, it's quite expensive.
That's why I'm, I'm suggesting that we leave it as it is here and, and really study this rather than.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any problem with that, I'm just, you know, I'm, if I'm nothing else, I'm consistent.
Yeah.
Pay for, pay for what you have money to pay for.
Why do we don't have the money?
Well, we don't have three hundred, four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars, whatever. So this is just one, one example of, of not having the money.
Well, this is, you know, I mean, because it is, because we're talking about tourism, it's, it's as much a political issue as it is a financial issue. And as you, as you go down, are aware, there are people out there that have very strong feelings about this. And, um, you know, one of the things that I don't think has been done, that I think should be done, is, uh, people throw a lot of numbers around about how much of our economy and our sales tax revenue comes from tourism. Nobody knows.
That's true.
Nobody knows.
I would agree with that.
We could find out, we'd have to do some studying, but we can find out. Um, and I think that's something you might want to entertain doing in the next year, uh, just because I think knowing what's really happening out there guides your decision.
I agree.
The actual balance, that kind of makes me doubt about it.
And, uh, it, but, I mean, obviously, what we spent for tourism was a lot less than it is going to be. That's all I can say.
Can we move on to streets? Gary, did we get the final, I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Obviously, this is largely funded by bed tax supplemented, uh, well, supplemented in very large part by the one cent sales tax that you all adopted in 2014. Um, and, uh, you know, we looked at it and it looks, well, good news is it's balanced if you have any questions on how it's being spent, if you have any questions.
Did we get the final numbers for the legislature? They make the final decision on her.
Mm-hmm.
Did we get any more?
No, four forty-one four or someone else.
But it's a, it's a, it's an increase.
I'm pretty confident in this one because they opted to tax us some other way instead of sweeping her.
Double taxes.
Yeah.
Well, they still.
We're still getting less money somewhere.
Only if you want license plates.
I just have a comment. Uh, I was talking to Spagley earlier today about the one cent, and anything that is left over from this year will be put in the budget for next year, in, it's revenue.
That money, that money remains in the, in the street department fund.
We would just need a budget if we, if we want to use it, though, because.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is to, is to put it into the budget.
Correct.
But we first have to figure out how much that's going to be or get, get close to it anyways, so.
I don't, uh, do you have anything? Anybody have anything on streets? It kind of sort of feels what it is. Uh, airport, unless there's something that I missed in.
Um, we are going to have a meeting with FAA slash A dot aeronautics with staff and the friends of Visby Municipal Airport, um, at the invitation of FAA. Um, they, uh, yeah, and, and this, that something should be done, but it, it was. Um, you know, random folks should not be calling the FAA on city business, but because that happened, um, that prompted a phone call to me, and I explained to him a little bit what was going on, and he said, well, invite him to the meeting because that will be the opportunity to ask all those questions that we get and we answer with, oh, we'll have to check with the FAA. And, and there's probably a good number of them, so, um, there's only one capital project in our airport CIP, and that is to, um, seal and strike the, the airport runway. Um, that's on their CIP for $250,000. Um, it won't be in the next fiscal year, so that's why we don't have it here. Um, and at the same time, um, there's the issue of the residential through-the-fence leases, which we have decided at long last that, uh, since we got them done and we sent them to FAA, they sent them back, that we're going to have to redo them all and incorporate what the FAA suggested that we do so that they will approve them. So, um, now, that's something that I can't do anything but defer at this point until we have city turn. Uh, because the leases that they have are okay, they, they just need to add a few things that the FAA requires. And it's, it's indeed unfortunate that that didn't happen the first time, but it did, so here we are.
Wednesday evening?
Um, Wednesday morning at eight AM. Uh, actually, we're in my office, it's this whole evening. So, so anyway, but, uh, you know, as far as this budget's concerned, it, it is what it is. And, uh, the only real variable there is, is fuel. We never know from here what that's going to end up being, but it never seems to make a whole lot of money.
It could, but.
We, we'd like it to, but, you know, believe me, going all the way back to where I first started, it would be much money.
If, if, if promises build it, like.
Okay, I've got a question. Um, on the building repair and maintenance, there's five thousand in there, is this for the, uh, the apartment there or what?
That's going to be for, um, all of the above and any exterior repair that needs to be made. Um, and, um, we've also got an issue with one of the, um, like, one of the ground lease lots that's out there that you had to fix the lease on a couple of months ago. Um, uh, the dimensions of that lot have to be specifically identified, which I didn't realize never worked. And so that's going to, there's going to be a little money there too. But it's, it's our ground, it's just leased to him, so we're responsible. What I'm hoping is that since I have a public works director now, I can be able to do that for free, but if I don't, I'll need some professional help.
Okay, and do we still have a tenant in that apartment?
Last time your student was, yeah. He's, uh, he's the guy whose lease you just assigned. Um, when was that, in March or April? Uh, that was the.
The hangar?
Are you talking about the rail hangar or the city?
No, no, no.
No, I'm talking about the apartment.
Oh, the apartment, it still has an occupant, yes.
Are we working on that or?
Um, to the degree that I can't discuss here.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. Under operational expenses, um, we have not, thirteen hundred's been the most, and we've got four thousand, um, allocated for, for proposed for this year, is there something that has changed? Have you knocked that down?
I don't think anything has changed, but I really think there's some things that should change.
What are some of the?
There is some, there is some deferred stuff down there that needs to be done, and that's one of the reasons I believe that the friends have come forward and asked if they could.
Operate.
I guess for, yeah, I got a better word. Um, and, uh, there will be some changes in the way it's done so that the place looks and operates better. You know, it's been, um, it's been underutilized because it's underoperated.
And there are several things that were not working that truly been working and eliminated, a lot of these are referred to be used.
I did fix the antenna when I was here before.
The other question I have is, uh.
Somebody remembers the broomstick.
The broomstick, yeah. Under the, um, revenue, we got a used fund balance, and there's also transfers from the general fund, but then, then, under transfer, expenses, we have a transfer to the general fund of eighty-three hundred dollars, seventy-six, thirty-two, seventy-six.
Fiscal year eighteen, the airport ended with a negative cash balance of eight thousand three seventy-six, and that's paying back the general fund for that shortfall. But then this year, again, they don't have enough, so they're having to, you know, horrible yet with the general fund.
So we're giving them money, but we're giving.
But, but right now, they, they do have a positive cash balance, you know, that fund balance at eighty-five, twenty-two, that's, you know, what they had as of March, so.
Right, right, okay.
And thus the tops did change direction.
I don't know, that's actually a better figure than I can see, maybe other.
Okay, anything else on airport? Uh, Queen Mine? Or am I missing anything? Oh, wastewater and sanitation. Yeah.
You almost got away.
Questions on wastewater? Again, you did, Mr. Howe did not make, he said this, or not his budgets.
Under equipment repair and maintenance, we did have one year that it was, you've got a hundred and thirty thousand proposed, there's only been one, the, the one year that it was over that, it's been around the hundred thousand. Is there a reason for that?
Redundancy, I believe. Miss Bagley, are, are you aware of something I, I was thinking it was?
Yeah, it was just in, in, I think Jacobs was supposed to come up with a list of repairs that were needed at the wastewater plant.
Please, I know I spoke with Jacobs last week, um, the, um, skater system is going to, um, need to, need some upgrades, and they're talking, they, they, they're getting a, a list together, and I believe they were saying somewhere around, um, we could be done in phases, but somewhere around eighty thousand dollars, they would pay to, to upgrade that system. But I'll definitely, I'm going to go with them, so they can get, they're going to do it, and we'll have a good, a good estimate.
And there's a contract services collection, it's been zero across the board, and now we've got ten thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the debt collection agency, the, their, I, I guess, of what they collect and they charge it to the, to that line.
It's making its money, but it's costing us money to make money.
Okay. Are we making more than ten thousand on this?
Yes.
Okay.
They, it's a percentage, so, yes.
Okay, okay.
That's, that's a good thing. In fact, I would love this to be much more than.
No, I think, actually, I think they came up with a, a number, um, they sent me a number the other day, I think forty thousand they collected, something more.
Oh, cool, okay. So, the question then, since Jacobs, it's their deal now, why are we paying for, um, employee testing and business travel and education and training? I thought the employees were there.
Well, wasteful, yes, it's, don't forget, we have collections for it too. And Jacobs runs the plant, and we still have the collection.
We, we still have the guys out there with the, with your sewer breaks.
We got bikes and the bunks.
Anything else?
Not using emergency reserves, that's good. Or we don't have the.
We don't have, after we refinance.
It's always good not to do something you don't have. Okay, are we good? Sanitation?
Oh, yes.
I just want to say for the record again that. I just want to say for the record again that perhaps this year we can get together to figure out some way to break resigning out so that we have figures that we can actually discuss with the, with, with our, our residents.
I'm going to encompass, next one. I'm in danger, having to deal with sustainability, recycling, and buildings, and some other cities are doing.
Excellent. Bring that good idea.
Well, I hope, that's the idea.
Hope so, too. Our, our problem is that we have people that are working in more than one area, and how much do you allocate each? On and on and on.
I think the equipment and supplies is a part, you want the safety equipment and things like that, it's hard to figure out.
Yeah, yeah, and I mean, that's, these are pretty squishy figures, and, and, so, maybe we could come up with some kind of something this year for the next budget.
Well, and it doesn't really matter how many people are dedicated to one part of that operation. Five thousand dollars in revenue for recycling is not my, our thing. You know, recycling is going to have to fundamentally change in the not-too-distant future because we're, we got boatloads of stuff, literally.
We know.
Boatloads of stuff out there that has no value.
Absolutely. But unfortunately, the, the majority of our population has been informed that we were making money.
Well, we were.
Well, if you don't have any expenses, you...
That was a long time ago.
If you only count income and don't count the expenses, you've always made money. Okay, no say.
Um, on the county tipping fee?
Yep.
Um, I've been, I see them going up, I don't see them going down.
Um, actually, the tipping fee will remain constant for the next fiscal year.
Could be, yeah, but we had two hundred and twenty-five thousand for last year budgeted and two hundred and twenty for this year.
All right, but we're only at a hundred and seventeen thousand as of March.
Yeah, but people have a lot more transfers recently, so... It's just one of those figures you can throw out.
And I had nothing to speak of.
I don't have anything to say.
Sanitation, fun throw-out is, we're here.
But is, is, is that a good? I, that, that just worries me when I see it, because usually you see the tipping fees are going up, so... But I'll, I'll take your word for it. You're the expert.
Well, but it was good news because, you know, as, as the city's designated a member of the tipping fee, decision-making body in the coaching camp, um, that was a short game. They decided to remain constant for this year. So, regardless of how much we throw out, we'll be the same operator.
And they knew, which are the cities out there, say, "Come on down."
They're trying to grow their business, which they are, yeah, but they're not that much different with this tipping fee.
Um, operational expenses, we have spent in the past seventy-seven, nine-hundred, ninety as the, as the top end, and we are budgeting ten thousand six hundred and forty-four, which seems like an odd number also. And we only spent six hundred and eighty-two dollars this, this year.
Well, I think the odd number is just to make the budget balance, there was some extra money that we had to throw out somewhere.
You could have put in the tipping fees. But it still seems to be out of whack, though, if we've only spent six hundred and eighty-two dollars.
Well, this is sanitation, and they do have a lot of expensive equipment with expensive stuff.
Sure do.
There's nothing cheap about it, and everything's always broken.
Well, I can see that in the repairs and, and so on, but I, I, what, what kind of things are in the operation, operational expenses?
There's some departments you just really don't want to achieve.
I think everyone's just getting slapped on.
We leak enough hydraulic oil all over the city, find a boil source.
So, you can leak it all over the city?
We can move on?
No, I... Well, could we, could we reduce it by a, a bit? I mean, because even if you look back at the sixteen-seventeen, that was our highest, and that was still under eight thousand dollars. Yeah, reduce it to eight thousand? Eight thousand six hundred and forty-four. I'm sorry. We wanted that number. I mean, cut it by two, is that going to really be drastic?
In a, in a grand scheme of things, it's not going to make a whittier difference. So, whatever, whatever church trigger.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I have a question on the non-cap equipment purchases. Um, we budgeted back in sixteen-seventeen for eighteen, and then in seventeen-eighteen, it was like only five thousand. Then we budgeted in eighteen, and we spent seven, but we're still at fifteen. Is that really, what does that cover, and do we have like a big purchase down the road? Because we've never, I mean, we haven't ever even spent ten grand when we budgeted. Um, it's the one right under, um, come on, just...
Fifty-five, two hundred.
Yeah, yeah, the right two hundred. It just seems odd that, you know, we budget for that, we've never, never even broke ten grand, and it'll keep well over.
I think, so we have nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand in revenues, and we have to make it balance with the expenses. So, a lot of these things, you know, are just to make it equal our revenues, otherwise, it's just going to go into, um, the, I have the, the line there, um, increase in reserves or, um, reserve accumulation eighty-five sixty-seven. That was just what was left over from revenue, and it would just go into, into there.
Okay.
And increase our reserve account. But at the same time, we, we thought that, um, thirty, was it thirty percent? Or from the public works operations manager, that we're going to have to move that salary in here.
Oh, that's great.
So, we might have to play with some of these numbers anyways to, to make it all balance with our revenues. But we should be able to do it without having to use reserves or anything.
Thank you.
Is that it?
But I feel better that it's in there because that's one of those things, you know, you may not know, you may not know today, and since we locked the number in when we passed the budget, then it's gone.
Mr. Graham? Thank you, Mr. Harrow. Do you have questions on clean mind balances?
With, um, with the capital expenditures, what, what do we have that...
I can get my car wheels again.
Oh, okay.
That's good to say. You're always after those wheels.
Yeah, I've gone out to bid, but it takes about eight months, ten months to get them, so maybe next fiscal year we're actually going to...
That's always, that's always the answer, is wheels. They're used a lot.
Are they getting harder to find?
Yeah, they're going to get a lot more expensive.
Yeah.
I'm on the phone, there's only really a couple manufacturers left anymore for our side wheels.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Graham? I wish they were all listening. Thank you.
I'll have to think fifteen years ago what it was. Now, we're a million-dollar operation, and it's...
Mr. Graham has a wonderful operation up there.
He does. Youth fund, that unless there's something in between, that, uh, we, we have something to do with. And we really don't have anything to do with youth fund. So, uh, we've got roughly a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars balances, I understand, which is a nice thing. And Visby Bus Fund, it's sort of what it is.
Another one of those things we run but have very little control. Okay, thank you.
We have...
I, I do have a question on the bus. During the last budget season, you were talking about it running in the reds.
Oh, yeah.
So, we've not had any other conversations since.
Right, it's, we still, we, we lose money on the bus.
Yeah, it doesn't reimburse a hundred percent, so we, we're still going to have an expense.
Right. We'll, we'll, we'll never make money on the bus.
No, I, I know not make money on the bus, but I thought at one point we were going to have a conversation on if there was something we could do to maybe kind of lessen the gap, or, I mean, is that something that...
We could certainly, we could certainly do that, we could certainly...
Have a conversation.
Absolutely, we can study such a knowledge, try to get it laid out, and get some people in here that know what they're talking about. Like that, I'm asking.
He says we don't know what they're talking about. Who'd be saying on the corner? I couldn't resist, man.
I know. Fair enough, yeah, yeah, it's like, absolutely.
It isn't, that, I mean, I, we need it here, necessary, but I, I don't know, I still think we need to...
Yeah, I think that we, that, that's a conversation, we need Seago in the room and Douglas. And that's a conversation that, that needs to be done, so we, we can certainly put that on the to-do list.
So, can this be my formal request to you to set something up?
Absolutely. Ms. Gordon, could we put that on the to-do list? Anything else, Council? Are we, uh, everybody's on the same page on all this? And with that, Mr. Higgins? Who do we adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor of adjournment, same public stating, aye. Aye, both saying same, we stand adjourned.
So, how much money is that, right? Yeah, if you did adjourn us?
About two hundred and twenty...